Let's go test, test. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then switch back to.
November 12, 2025, regular meeting of council with the first newly elected council of the 2025 year. So we'll call the meeting to order. We have an agenda in front of us and I would like to propose two changes and then I'll entertain other changes. We'd like to move directly under this agenda point, 10.3 Orientation Extension Resolution. There. And then we've also been married aware that under 6.2.3 Closed Session regarding 6.2.4 Tabor and District Community Adult Learning Session, Kristy Forsythe, she will not be attending in person, so it would be logical to move it directly under the 9:30 Closed Session. So we're not going in and out, in and out if people are willing. So with those two additions, does anyone else have additions or changes they would like to propose? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I could accept the agenda with the changes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor? That's carried. So with the change, we'll go to 10.3 Orientation Extension Resolution.
Thank you, Reeve. Yeah, this particular request for decision outlining the need for essentially what we're suggesting, a 90-day extension for all councillors to complete their Part II Orientation is what's before council. It's a recent change or somewhat recent change within Municipal Government Act that requires councillors after the municipal elections to receive both Part I and Part II. So we just have one councillor that needs to finish Part II, and this gives us a little bit of grace time to organize and make that happen, as well as allow, will allow for them to be able to participate in council meetings during that time as well.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? It's just to meet the provincial guidelines and to demonstrate we have approved extension by council.
So you're just needing a motion to that effect?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
So the-
Extend for the 90 days.
Yeah, so the motion is that the MD of Tabor extend the deadline to complete Phase II of the mandatory orientation training as required under Section 201.1 of the MGA to a final deadline of February 10, 2026, moved by Councillor Johnson. Any questions? Those in favor? Thank you. All right. And so at this time, we're going to take a minute to introduce the new council and we'll start with Councillor Reynolds on that side since he, then the new guys will see how it goes.
Murray Reynolds, councillor for Division VI in Genania.
Lane Johnson, councillor for Division I, Tabor through to Chian on the far west side of the MD.
John Tercato, which is Division II, which is south of Tabor.
Tamara Miyanega, councillor for Division IV, which is Tabor to the Old Man River and on the north side to the County of Lefford.
Councillor Martin Gondro, Division VII of Oxl.
David Torrey, councillor for Division III, Grassy Lake and area, south of the river all the way into the County of Forty Mile and then all the way south.
Ernie Peters, councillor for Division V, which consists of a mile west, no east of the 36, all the way to the rivers and on south to the rivers for haze.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors, and it will be a pleasure to serve with all of you. And at this time, just because we are starting a new council term, CEO Crofts, would you like to introduce your executive team?
Sure. Arlos Crofts, myself as CAO. To my right, Lays Lutes, our Legislative and Corporate Affairs Officer. And then behind me, to my left, our Director of Community Services, Bryce Serena. In the middle, Corey Green, Director of Municipal Operations. And on the right, Mike Passy, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number three, Declaration of Conflict. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to protocol items, any announcements or recognitions? And I'll kind of just set the tone. Tabor Public Library has the Jingle Sale coming up on Friday and Saturday. That's their primary fundraiser to offset programming costs. And, yeah, go ahead, Councillor Gondro.
Rippest of Oxl this Saturday the 15th and for the Hagg Society and for the Oxl Chambers, trying to raise some money. So this Saturday the 15th, if anybody's interested.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we will continue on to confirmation of minutes. October 14, 2024, regular meeting of council minutes.
I can move these with the correction that I forwarded where it shows that John DeGroot was absent. That was a different John. That was John Tercato that was absent. So I'll move them with that change.
Thank you. So motion is moved to approve the October 14, 2025 Council Meeting Minutes with the change. Any questions? Those in favor? That motion is carried. October 28, 2025, Organizational Meeting Minutes. There is a minor change that was noted in shared notes, just a typo on three-point, page three, 8.2. Instead of Reeve, it should say Deputy Reeve.
So with that change, would some like to move those minutes?
I move that we accept both minutes.
Thank you. And any questions on moving October 28, 2025, Organizational Meeting Minutes with the change? Those in favor? That motion is carried. A reminder that this meeting is recorded. It's live and it is recorded, so we have to always use our mics when we talk. And you can choose to turn them off when you're not talking, if you like, or you can leave them on the whole time. So number six, public engagement, call for people to speak. This would be over and above anyone who is scheduled for a delegation. Is there anyone at this time who would like to address council? Besides your delegation? You're going to get to do that. Yeah. Okay, and no one online, Arlos? So at this time, we'll move into delegations. Billy Winburne.
And Don Weeb.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm here for moral support.
First of all, congratulations to everybody that's representing their district. To my right, Don Weeb is representing Rowland Seeds. Glenn Hofer's here from Cameron Farms. Tammy Jo Bruins here from Bruins. And Jim Douglas is here representing himself. We're here because on August 19, our transfers for our leased land got rejected. And that's the first time in history that the MD has rejected a transfer. Most of the time, it's been put through. A precedent has been set. What the reason we're asking for the transfers is I have seven quarters that's very close to Bruins. And I have three quarters that's right in the middle of Cameron Farms' dry land. And Jim Douglas has, we share a fence line together. So we talked as neighbors and decided and come to agreement of moving some land around so it's more efficient for all our, for all our, our operations. We understand what's on the table, but that has absolutely nothing to do with our contract right now. On the last meeting, when we got rejected, there was some remarks made by the three people that rejected him. Mr. Hildebrand said that it's an odd time. Well, I've been waiting 50 years since Don Calloway sold it to Bruce Wills for the land right next to us. And it just happened now. So back in July, we put our request in and it never got looked at till the 19th of August. Mrs. Clausen made a, made a comment that we're undermining the MD and taking advantage of the MD. Two families have been here for five generations. The Hutterats, Cameron Farms is going on 90 years. And Jim Douglas has been here for, for a very long time himself. We've been ranching for 100 years and we want to keep ranching in the MD of Tabor for another 100. Since John Tercato is here, he made a comment about he's worried about our finances. Can you give an explanation about our finances?
Normal protocol in delegations is that you would present, and then if council has questions afterwards, then we will respond.
Okay. I, I really don't think it was, it was proper for him to worry about our finances. He should be worrying about the MD's finances. We can look after ourselves. There was $120,000 transfer fee from us coming to the MD in these transfers.
I think that, to add to what Billy's saying there, the fact that we're in good standing with the MD is really all that is of concern in regards to finances of any of the parties involved in the transfer.
And I talked to Tamara the next day and she was sick to her stomach that it got rejected. And she offered some advice to contact a lawyer. And so we did. And the lawyer started digging into lots of stuff of policies that, and bylaws that were broken from the MD of Tabor and the provincial government on municipal affairs. And I'm not sure what you guys got for a package on that. And she had said that it might be $1,000 for a lawyer to look into this. But I have the lawyer's papers and it costs us $20,155.67
to look into a lot of different things and come back with, with information for us that policies were, were broken on both levels of government.
So I guess what we're asking is we're not trying to take advantage of the MD. We want to be here for another 100 years. This land swap between us isn't at anybody's personal gain. I'm transferring 10 quarters and getting 13 back, which I can run maybe 18 more cows in a year. So we would like the transfers to be put through and the lawyer's fees. Since it wasn't our mistake, I would like the MD to refund us for the total of, of that. And I have, I have everything here for each one of you on the lawyer's fees. And like I said, I'm not sure if you got the lawyer's letter, but I have that here also for everybody to, to look at.
And what Billy's referring to there is Arlos, I think, had said that all of the councillors were going to get a package on this issue. So I think Billy's just wondering if you've got that as part of the package, the fee or the letter from the lawyer, as well as the initial resolutions.
I could answer, but I'll turn to Arlos just so that we're-
Yeah, the, the package is in today's agenda package. Letters from the lawyer, those were sent via registered mail directly to the councillors. Now, there's been an election in between, so those councillors-
Yeah, we just wondered if it's part of the package you present, because I think Billy understood you're sending the package to the current council.
It's in the agenda today, but the letters-
But the letter-
That you're referring to was sent directly to councillors by your lawyer. So that's, that was, I guess, passed me.
And to you as well, so.
Yeah. But I'm not reproducing what they've already done. I, I wasn't in a position to reproduce what they've already done.
Yeah.
Okay, so anything else before I go into the next part of a delegation, like of this? Okay, so at this time, if council has any questions that would provide clarity, recognizing this item is on the agenda at a later point, but it would be to be able to ask the delegation any questions or for clarification. This is not, delegations are not a time to debate back and forth with the delegation. And so if you have no questions, we can carry on, or if you have questions, you may ask at this time.
Sure, last one.
Yeah.
Um, just so it's out of your work, any bill that the MB's presented, you, you guys have paid, correct? So you're remembering good standing all the time, correct?
Yes.
If you got a lease agreement or if you, it's always been paid, it's not subject to whether it's, the amount is right or wrong. It's just, if you get it, you pay it, correct?
Yes. Yes. And we've handed in our stocking returns also.
Thank you.
And then on another thing, so three years ago, we sold all our cows. And I know it's been talked about that on that August 19 meeting
Just one question, you indicated that you've sold all your cows. Are you actively maintaining a herd?
Yeah, we, we're in the middle of rebuilding.
So you have cattle now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We're at about 75% of, of what we, what we were before we sold them, so.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Any questions to the delegation from administration?
None.
Okay. So at this time, if you want to do a close of your delegation or if you're good, then we'll continue on.
So can we come back, like you guys are going to look at this later, correct?
Yeah, you, the council meeting is open. You can stay the whole time. We do have two closed session items we're going to deal with consecutively. So when we deal with those, we'll clear the gallery. But then the rest of the agenda minus.
When do you figure that you'll be looking at that?
Um, okay, well, let me just see. So that is 9.3. So I, I'm terrible to speculate because some things last five minutes and I think they'll be five minutes, but they're an hour. I can text you when I think we're getting close, but I would say it'll be an hour. But I'll, that we'll need for sure. But I can text both you and Dawn if you like. And we've done that for other delegations so that they can get back. We don't ever try to shortchange someone from being here. But you also don't have to leave except when we do closed session.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is also part of public engagement. We had a request for land purchase. So this item ends up going into closed session. So the process is I'm going to read the rationale for closed session. And since we're going to do two back to back, I'll read the rationale for both of those. And then we will move into closed session. Yes, CEO Crofts.
Just, just referencing the agenda here, there, there's only two closed session agenda items. And the second one is scheduled for 1:30 PM.
Oh, so we don't have to deal with Christie's?
No, that's, that's.
It'll be fine in open?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. I would just, I wasn't sure that that was in open or closed. All right, thank you. So I will read this in and then look for a motion to go into closed. Closed session pursuant to, and actually before I do that, CEO Crofts, just so I have the protocol correct, recognizing that one of the closed session items deals with Mr. Hildebrand, who's in the gallery. Should he leave at the moment of closed session and then we ask him to come back? Or will he stay and present?
I think practically it's fine. If he, if he's in the gallery, it's fine to just carry.
Right. So then our normal practice, when a person has asked to be in closed session, we leave them in the room. And then when we're ready to discuss it, we ask them to, to leave. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear.
My, my understanding of this scenario is it's a delegation, so I don't know.
You're fine. I'm just verifying and really I'm just speaking through so everyone's clear on practice. All right, so closed session pursuant to section 197 sub 2 of the MGA and section 20 of the Access to Information Act, disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, a land purchase request. So motion to go into closed?
I give a motion to go into closed.
Those in favor?
So now we wait for LACE and then we'll do the motion to come out. Okay, so Councillor Turcato has moved a motion to come out of closed 946. Those in favor, that's carried. Any motions at this time coming out of closed? Do you, and we do have an item at the bottom 15, but we generally will deal with it at the time. So I wonder if we need to have a motion to acknowledge the proponent that we have received it and we will address it at a later time. So do we have a motion that looks like that?
We don't. It would be sort of receiving the, I believe it was a delegation, so could receive their delegation presentation.
Okay.
Just, just one sec here, I've got lots of windows open.
All right. I have, Councillor Turcato has asked to make a motion, so I would always acknowledge a councillor who was ready to make a motion, so.
So I would propose, I would move that the MD of Tabor pause any further discussions and decisions regarding lease policies, sales, lease transfers and the scope down project on all lease lands owned by the MD of Tabor until council has been given an opportunity to review all information used in the decisions made thus far, as well as any new information that might be beneficial for future decisions and that council schedule a committee of the whole meeting or two solely on these subjects to be held as soon as reasonably possible prior to council, prior to council discussion before the end of December 2025.
Councillor Turcato, I, I could see that you're reading that in. Can you forward that to administration? Oh, you did, okay, so then administration will put that on our screen because I was.
I forwarded it by email, but I can bring my device over as well.
If you don't mind, John, I'm having a trouble opening it. Oh.
No, I can't open it anymore, sorry.
So it's not a, it is not a requirement of a councillor to have it in type form, but at this point in our procedure by law, but there is lots of value if it's especially a lengthy motion that admin or I can't quickly scribe it, that they give it. So we'll give council a minute to get that together, so we all have an opportunity to read it. For me, I am not auditory, I need to read something before I can evaluate. Yep, so a request to take five minutes, that will give them time to get the motion, so we'll take five minutes recess. All right, so we will resume council. So Councillor Turcato has made the following motion, that the MD of Tabor pause any further discussions and decisions regarding lease policy, sales, lease transfers and the scope down project on all leased lands owned by the MD of Tabor until council has been given an opportunity to review all information used in the decisions made thus far, as well as any new information that might be beneficial for future decisions. Further, that council schedule a committee of the whole meeting or two solely on these subjects to be held as soon as reasonably possible prior to discussion, but before the end of December 2025. So that is the motion on the floor, so now we can start discussion.
The scope down policy then, is that gonna pause then? Or is it just what was decided before is gonna carry on? Can we still discuss it? Or is it the whole project gonna pause from what last council decided? I'm not comfortable not discussing that if it's gonna. From what last council decided, I'm not comfortable not discussing that if it's gonna proceed and we can't discuss it.
Counselor Tercado.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, um. I think until we have all the information, uh we shouldn't be uh. Making any decisions, everybody needs to have all the information that we've had previously. And there's also new information that would be nice to be shared amongst all of us, and all of us be able to have discussion before we make any. Any decisions, that's that's my take. I think it's important to have the discussion. I mean, we were in closed session way too long for something as, I guess, I want to call it simple, because it's not simple. As land sale, but that's because we brought in a lot of different stuff into the discussion. That went over and above what the discussion should have been, and so that's why I see it's very important we just put a pause on here.
To me, it seems like we put more in this than what I was expecting, I was expecting just to see sales and decisions, not. Discussions, lease transfers, other things. It seems like more got included in this than I was expecting to see coming out of closed session. We were talking about a sale, and I agree, we should pause um decisions related to sales until we've got more information. But I'm not sure that that should apply to the lease transfers that were brought up by the delegation, seems like everything is getting locked up in this.
Yeah, I kind of feel this, I kind of feel the same way as uh Counselor Tori. Was putting the, we were talking about sales, but now the lease transfers are in there and the. Scope down project, which is further in our agenda, but. These transfers have been. Forget the first time that's come into council, but if we're gonna. If we're going to uh. Pause it farther, will that add some more frustration for the repairs that are concerned?
All right. Counselor Tercado. The motion has made a motion. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I can, can we make a motion to amend it?
You absolutely can, yeah, so.
Make a motion we amended to take out the sales and lease transfer, I mean, just leave sales in? Take out the lease transfer and the scope down project part?
Okay, so the amendment would be. That the first sentence, so the amendment would be to remove. Sales, to remove lease transfer and scope down.
Leave in sales.
No, 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 do the amendment separate.
Yeah, so no, yeah, I'm gonna do them, the amendment is to. Can you just, so decisions regarding lease policies can stay?
Yeah, and.
Sales can stay, lease transfers you'd like removed and scope down.
Project removed, yeah.
Okay, so the amendment is to remove from the uh motion. Lease transfer and scope down. So now we can begin discussion on the amendment. Deputy Reeve.
Sorry, can we put it up on the?
Yeah, we can pause and wait.
Before, so you can discuss the amendment before you?
Yeah.
I appreciate the comments that are coming out, but I guess I, speaking to the amendment on the motion. I feel that it's, what we're talking about is going to set precedent. Dealing with the applications, the requests that have come in, and the way we deal with those is going to set precedent for whatever. Is going to come at us in the future. I also feel that there's more information, a better understanding that is. That I require before I'm in a position to feel comfortable about the decisions that are going to be made going forward. I can't help but think that if we were to just say, let's. Put everything on hold until we've had a chance to dig into it to the. Extent required to make sure that we're all comfortable with the decisions that are, that we're going to be making and. Will set precedent for the rest of this term. I appreciate. The the concern about holding up. Action on the part of individuals that have expressed interest in moving forward in a timely manner. But I think it would be beneficial for us to have that level of discussion. Before we go ahead and start making some decisions. On these matters.
So right now, we are discussing comments on the amendment.
I think I'm a little unclear in my mind whether we're talking about pausing. Action on the scope down project? Or whether we're um pausing, whether we're ju- like, are are we saying that in this? You know, motion, the way before the amendment, that we're actually gonna stop doing any w- work or. You know, whatever administration's already working on with the scope down, I I don't think that's all in this, is it? That's not what we're talking about, is it?
Could you scroll, yeah, so we can see the entirety, and maybe just make it a little smaller?
Smaller?
Uh just so I can see all of it at once, sorry, and maybe you can, I just on my screen, I, yeah, that's better for me. Pause any further discussions and decisions regarding. CEO Crofts.
Sorry, I I'm very, will purposely try not to. Enter that realm of debate, but just from administration's perspective. I can speak to how administration would. Would interpret this, just that might help clarify some things, may or may not help clarify so- some things for council. But what I would do, because it's my job to implement whatever, whatever's made here, or whatever gets carried. When I read the initial proposed motion, sorry, I know you're talking about the amendment. First line references pausing of further discussions and decisions. Regarding lease policy, sales, lease transfer, and the scope down project on those, all these lands. So what essentially I would do as administration. Would be if there's any previous council direction or resolutions. On any of those, I would essentially suspend them or pause them from an implementation perspective. Right, so there are existing resolutions with respect to scope down project. I won't take any action on it until council decides that this resolution, if if passed. Council decides. This resolution is at some point satisfied, and then. That would be a green light for administration to carry on with the implementation. Same thing with lease transfer side of things and the policies and sale, the relevant policies. So I guess. After my, after reading it, looking at it for five minutes, I guess that's the best on-the-spot clarification I could give. To council in terms of how administration would implement or respond. So take or leave it, hopefully that is is helped from a contextual perspective, and I'll. I'll back out now and let council carry on with their debate on motion.
Counselor Tori.
Um I just, I guess the lease transfer thing, you know, I'm to- totally new to this, but we had the delegation come on. I'm fine pausing all of it, is, you know, I'm, because I think we do need to pause scope. And and sales of land, all that until we get more information and and um discuss policies. I just didn't know if that lease transfer um is, should fit into this whole category. Uh I'm all for a pause and getting more information, absolutely. Um but that's something that had been done, you know, for a long, I mean, it's always been done, that when people. Um request a transfer that we, we process it and anyway, so. I don't know that that transfer is going to affect these other things, but but if that needs to be in here, then that's fine.
Okay, so we are discussing the amend, the moved amendment to remove lease transfer and the scope down project from the proposed motion. Any further discussion?
Well, that, so that I'm bringing up later, so we won't be discussing it.
That, but that is how I interpret it, and that is how I.
Sorry, I should say that.
Okay.
So. As far as I'm interpreting, then, I got a something bringing up on the agenda later. So with what we're doing, that was just paused. My question about, about the loan. So according to Arlo's, what he's saying, everything will be paused till we, the council, can discuss everything, correct?
Yeah, until council determines that if, again.
Yeah, if we approve this motion. Okay.
Then.
Then we won't have to discuss that, I'll just be. I don't wanna bring it again later, if it's gonna be paused, so we don't, all right.
Go ahead.
So are you referring to approving the amended motion or the original motion put forward by Counselor Tercado?
So the amended, yeah, the amended motion is is here.
Yeah, so.
I'm fine with leaving it all in, as long as we're not making a decision, we're gonna discuss, we're gonna pause everything, I'm fine with the original motion, that we're gonna just pause everything till we can discuss everything, and everything is paused.
So.
I'm fine with that motion, and as long as it's clarified that it's all paused.
Counselor Condor, then would you, are you saying you would like to withdraw the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so we, the amendment has been withdrawn, so we are back to the original motion. We have had clarification from the CEO. I'll read the motion in one more time, and if there's any other debate, otherwise we'll ask the question.
Yeah, just. Based on your personal experience with the transfer, do you think we should look at the transfer part? I'm I'm trusting you guys with the experience. Um or could could that be handled separately, or should we leave it in with all these others?
I'll give you, not from my experience, but my opinion.
Okay.
I think there is so much involved in all of the municipal leased lands. That it would be better for all of council to have an understanding. Of how that decision came about, as well as what will happen in the future. And then, then we can make those decisions, if we make a rash decision today. It could set precedent for how we go forward.
Okay, and I just didn't know if that, if the transfer was one of those rash decisions on, based on your guys' opinions, yeah.
I mean, the decision was made and at one time, and now it's being brought back to ask to be revisited. So when we get to that at the mo- the motion, and I would assume it will be the same thing on scope down. I will state, we have a motion to pause discussion on these items. Council, is that still your intention? On the transfer item and the scope item? CEO Crofts, is that how you would interpret if we're just going by process, not opinion?
Yeah, if if, again, if this is passed, then that's how I would interpret that.
Yeah, so that's.
Thank you.
Counselor Reynolds.
I think it would be a good idea to get everybody up to speed on all the policies and stuff, because it's new council and. Instead of jumping into something and wishing tomorrow or tonight that you wouldn't have made that decision, it's better to wait and. Everybody sees the same paperwork.
Thank you. Okay, I will read in the motion. That the MD of Tabor pause any further discussion and decisions regarding lease policy, sales, lease transfer, and the scope down project on all leased lands. Owned by the MD of Tabor until council has given an opportunity. To review all information used in the decisions made thus far. As well as any new information that might be beneficial for future decisions. Further, that council schedule a committee of the whole meeting or two solely on these subjects to be held as soon as reasonably possible. Prior to council discussion, but before the end of December twenty twenty five. Any further comments? Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, so we're gonna continue with the motion, and as you can see, when you move um items around. The electronic copy has different numbers than our paper copy, so I will try to use the numbers. That is on the electronic copy, so seven point two point four, Tabor and District Adult Learning Association.
Just one moment here, I'm gonna.
Yeah, it's okay.
So ultimately, this. Reeve and council, this is a correspondence that was sent to council from the. Tabor and District Adult. Sorry, Tabor and District Community Adult Learning Association, TD Kala, I'm just more used to saying TD Kala. Um with respect to receiving funds that the MB of Tabor had approved a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. For a project that they were working on, are working on. She wasn't. Able to be here in person, so she wanted the letter to be before council. From the perspective of a delegation, so I can't really speak for her, but. Her correspondence is there, representing TD Kala, there is a memo later on in the agenda that that does provide additional information on the topic.
So as normal with delegations, we can, we will just accept that, and since we know there is another item on the agenda. I would propose the discussion happen at that time. So we will. Uh Lace, do you want a motion to receive? The Winburn delegation and the Tabor Adult Learning delegation, just to be consistent? Okay, so let's backtrack a little bit, so we'd be looking for a motion to receive. Do you want to reference the parties involved since they spoke to all all four parties? Or it's his delegation request?
He's the one that submitted the delegation requests.
So the motion would be to receive the. Billy Winburn delegation as presented.
I can move that.
Counselor Reynolds. Any questions? Those in favor? Thank you. Pardon me? Yeah, um then we had a delegation with a request for a land purchase, so we should have a motion to. Let the proponent know we received his letter, and we'll deal with that at a future time. So someone else can use better words if you want.
I'm just wondering, both of them should be sent a copy of the motion that was passed, because that would inform them as to what the response is. To their requests.
I think there's value in that for sure. So we'll have. Okay, so this, yeah, we do need a motion to let the proponent know we received their letter. And that, and if you have wording, but if not, then someone from council make a motion to receive the proponent for the. Request for land purchase, and that it will be dealt with at another time, and we currently have a motion. To pause discussion, so Arlo's, I didn't mind the motion. Okay.
And I can move whatever Arlo's is gonna draft.
He'll want you to wait till you read it, we have a lot of, we, we have, we have a lot of trust in him, but. He's a procedure man, and he will want you to read it.
Didn't, I didn't really change anything, I just brought it up higher, if that's sufficient. Unless, is that the actual agenda number? The new agenda number, yeah?
I'll move that.
Okay, so the motion reads, uh moved by Deputy Reeve Johnson, council direct administration to send the proponent. Acknowledgement of receipt regarding their proposal, agenda item seven point two point two. Of the November twelve twenty five regular council meeting, and will continue discussions related to the matter. Once the policies and procedures regarding sale of land are adopted. Any questions, those in favor? That motion is carried, and then a motion to receive the Tabor and District. That motion is carried, and then a motion to receive the Tabor and District Community Adult Learning Association. Request for clarification and release of approved loan. Thank you. Any questions on that? Those in favor? Motion is carried. Next on the agenda is public hearings, but that is scheduled for one, so we will be moving to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is there. So that council has an opportunity to. Read through everything, and then we will hit the subject matters. But unless admin or council have a question, there is an assumption that you've read and understood and don't have a question. But this is our first council meeting, there's a lot that was in this, so I encourage you to ask anything and everything that you may have. But I will, because it's a CEO's report, initially turn it over to CEO Crofts.
Yeah, so apologies in advance, a little bit of monotone. Voice that I have, but. There is, just to kind of speak to the CAO report in general and the typical. Schedule in which you can expect to receive it on a regular basis. We are a little bit off kilter from a. From regular expectations of when the CAO report comes. Typically, CAO report along with council reports comes at the second council meeting of the month. However, because we had a bit of a scheduling glitch. With orientation in the middle. Um, we just put it, the CAO report on on this month. So you'll see that ultimately corrected. In January, the second meeting in January, simply because there's only one meeting in December as well. And then we'll seek for those that are interested on council, then we'll seek council reports if you want to submit them for the December meeting and give you some time to. Not worry about it so much in November, for the second meeting in November. So starting in January, you'll see the CAO report along with counselor reports. On the second council meeting of each month. Or if it's a council meeting, or if it's a month where there's only one council meeting in the month, it'll be on that council. On on that particular council meeting. And then part of the CEO report also does include the quarterly quarterly financial update. And those, as implied in the title, those will come quarterly um to council for for their information and review. Nonetheless, um, it is here. Um, just just. To highlight perhaps a more live example of um. Of what the last, one of the most recent resolutions or motions that was voted upon or passed. Administration has been working on um putting things into place with respect to the scope reservoir down. So whatever is in here as an update, that'll be paused. Ultimately, so just to use that as a as an easy example to reference. I referenced there the advert, advertising and whatnot for the um auctions, um, public auction for the. For the pro, for the um project. So at this point, based on the resolution that was just passed, that's paused. Try to give a bit of a, an update as to what what are some of the ongoing. Corporate corporate type policies that are being. Either reviewed or have recently been reviewed and are complete. Um, the governance roles and responsibilities framework policy, um, I have missed in my update, it should reference complete. But it's referenced here is in progress. Um, and ultimately. The CEO report includes um reports from across the organization. From the other departments as well. So I'm, I'm here as well as staff is here to speak to any questions that council might have based on what what information is provided. So I'm open to questions that council might have.
Okay, we'll take questions at this time.
Can I just make a quick comment? Uh, just reading through it all, all in one piece. You guys are responsible for a lot of things. Anyway, it was kind of fun to read it through. I spent most of the night actually reading it, and uh, anyway, you guys, you're accomplishing a lot of stuff. It's just pretty impressive to see it all together like that.
Deputy Reeve.
You referenced the strategic priorities initiatives at a number of places through reporters there. One document where it lists all of council's strategic priorities that we could access and just.
Yeah, for sure. Um, that was actually the plan to be provided. It's part of the orientation here a couple of weeks, but it is also on the website as well.
It, there is a good summary spot on the website that outlines it all.
And under our strategic priorities, we do review quarterly. Well, that has been the practice is to review them quarterly, so. Likely you'll see. Well, we're at a point in time where we're. Going to be establishing a new set of strategic priorities with a new council um in January, so. But yes, we will, we will share that with you.
Council Tricado.
On the horsefly spillway, I see there's still fifteen million left, but we, did we just approve a five? Five point, uh, what was it, five point what?
Yeah, it was around just shy of five million dollars um phase of the project.
So how much, what is the shortfall to complete the rest of phase three, two, whatever you call it?
Does, the shortfall would range, Mike, do you? Can you speak to that? I can only speak to the the most recent calculation because it does fluctuate based on estimates versus tenders, so.
In the, in the estimate sides, we're looking somewhere around the five or six million dollar shortage. As far as budgeted costs come in, uh, what, since this most reason one is was tendered, it came in lower than what we were anticipating that project would be, which then would send me back to my. My sheets to figure out what that calculation looks like, which then should. Would reduce the shortage of, by whatever that difference was, but I haven't run those models yet.
Thank you.
And and for clarity, we only are awarding contracts that are fully funded, so. It's broken up into phases and there's no. Um, live or real shortfall that we've actually awarded a contract for, just for clarity sake.
There often isn't too many questions on the CAO report because it is so comprehensive, but that. You should ask anything that you need clarification on. And you can ask that as we go through the consent agenda, if something comes to mind. You can, we can come back to it. So for today, we will continue on with the titles, and then if you have something on the CAO report, please don't hesitate to ask. So Attachment A, GL category descriptions.
Yeah, I will have.
Just while you're doing that, it it's quite interesting to note to that each of the departments submit and provide those details and. Even our social media, our website hits, it's just good information to know that there are people getting it, but it's also good for you to share. Those social media platforms, our website with your residents so that they are getting that good information that a lot of work and effort is put into.
So something we've added to, I would say that earlier on in two thousand twenty five. Council and administration together have updated and revamped its financial reporting um to provide ultimately additional detail. Um, but not only additional detail. More of a meaningful context and explanation as it relates to. As it relates to the budget and and performance with respect to the budget. So I'll have our Director of Corporate Services come up and wa- walk us through. Each of the. Pieces of the quarterly financial reporting, starting with um. This cover sheet, it it's intended to be a bit of a guide. Um, not only for. Understanding the quarterly financial reports, but also for as we engage in budget. Walk through kind of the final pieces of the interim budget later this month. It will help, it will help us understand what each category of the budget means, what it's intended for, and. What those types of expenses are typically expended on. So I'll have Mike Passy come up and. And review that with us.
It's good to know that as this was part of the CIA report, it doesn't put people to sleep, it keeps people awake even, so. So, yeah, we, as as Arlo's was stating, um, the quarterly report, we've, we've changed how we bring the finance reporting forward to council. Um, I see it as a continually continuously evolving document as as to what's presented, how it's presented. Uh, this time being, including the GL category descriptions to aid in that understanding of what the, what those categories mean. And so. Yeah, we we separate them into revenues and expenses. The revenues have taxes, which are property taxes we collect uh on behalf of the MD, as well as on behalf of the organizations, which we. Uh, that we collect for the province and the Tabor District Housing for requisitions. Um, taxes related to local improvements or other special taxes, uh, sales to other governments, the funds that we received from other governments for services provided. Uh, sales and goods and services, other revenue or the, and other own sources are areas in which we either sell utility, water, sewer services, or permits and revenue, permits and and fines revenue. Um, and then we have uh conditional grants for grants that come from uh outside of organizations that have conditions put on them, meaning you have it for. You you get a grant for X project, that's a conditional grant on the condition being that you perform this project. And then capital transfers, um, usually deals at the end of the year, uh, as we bring in the funds uh to fund our capital projects, recognize those revenues, we won't, I don't think we see those uh too much in in. The current set as we haven't completed our year-end uh processes. Uh, on the expense sides. Starts off with salaries, wages, benefits, which is all the costs associated with personnel of the MD, uh, contracts and general services. Is, are where we capture the costs of things where uh where we buy a service or. A service from from someone else who then performs that service for the MD. Um, and I'll contrast that with the materials, goods and supplies one where it's, that's where we buy items, inventory, things to then do the work uh that the staff to complete themselves. Purchased from the governments are where we have the costs associated with. Bylaw or the RCMP contract or or water commissions where we purchase something from another level of government or another uh government entity. Uh, transfer payments is the, is what has been. The category header for um things relating to amortization of capital assets and asset retirement obligations. Um, which are uh transactions that we handle during our year-end processes. Uh, so again, through the quarter report, you'll see those as saying a zero percent expended. Uh, in their various departments, but those are completed at the end of the year when we, when we amortize the assets as a, as an en masse um transaction. Uh, other transfers are ones we transfer to other groups and individuals um for regional partners or recreation or other community donations. Uh, and the requisitions are funds that we pay to uh the province for the education and to the uh housing authority. For their representative running their facilities and operations, as well as the uncollectible tax laws, writing off bad debts. Uh, and so we see not, not all departments have all of these areas, but they will have uh uh at least one up to, up to all of them. And then moving into the actual report. The operating side of it, uh, it starts off with having the the overall revenues and and expenses um. Showing the budget, the actuals and the variance of those across the organization, uh, and then moves into uh the individual. Departments and uh. The the mode we've taken is is is, this is a report that is done at September thirtieth of the uh of each year, seventy-five percent way through the year. So we're looking for that percentage variance to be about seventy-five percent, and then we give a plus or minus ten percent to that. Um, to say that's within a reasonable margin that we, it may not be exactly at seventy-five percent, both within that that window. Then that's where we'd expect that those funds to be, and and there's certain factors that affect that being. Certain expenditures are, occur more in the summertime rather than in the wintertime, and so we see a majority of those expenses uh occur. In those months, and so we see a greater at by September, we see those budgets maybe a little higher than, uh, those, those actuals higher than. Uh, the seventy-five percent because they've been fully expended, um, but they won't have any more expenditure for the rest of the year. Or in uh the, in in taxes, we recognize all the revenue being received once we issue the levy. And that shows that that's fully, the the hundred percent of that revenue is is received um at uh, when we issue that in in early June. However, taxes aren't due until September thirtieth, and so we have an account on the side that says it's a receivable account, and then we're waiting to see where those taxes come in. And so we haven't, we've received a majority of the taxes, but there's still some outstanding taxes at this point, but we see things like that, where just depending on the certain item, we may see them being fully expended or not at all, or a partial way through there. And so I won't go through every single department, but if there's any questions regarding a department, I can do my best to answer some of those questions. However. We do get the information from the different managers and supervisors from the departments who have a more intimate knowledge of their respective departments.
Council Tricado.
I have a question on transportation services at five hundred and thirty-five percent.
Let's find that page so we can all have that.
Q three report, uh, operating budget versus actuals.
Is it on the sum, the summary page, like?
Yeah.
Transportation services uh under expenses.
This, okay, I can see what happened here. This is a, this, this, this summary is a. Manually entered, port's not one generated from the system, uh, I can see as a, it has. Uh, moved the decimal over. A spot, so the, yeah, those ones, those, those three, I see fire services, transportation services and water utilities.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, it's a, one of those things that Excel does where if you have it as a percentage. And then you, and then you type it in, it it likes to shift those around sometimes. So those are, yeah, those would be, they should be a decimal over. Uh, there'd be thirty-five point six percent, fifty-three point five and thirty-eight point eight percent. Otherwise, that's a, yeah.
The, the numbers don't say that, but the percentage does, so I knew something was wrong.
Yeah.
This is the first time I've seen it in this format, and I very much appreciate it. I appreciate the notes, gives me a better sense of where we're at. So thank you for this new format. I'm sure as we go along, maybe there's things to tweak, but at this point. This gave me more information than I've ever received on finances. Thank you.
Uh, the next report relates to the uh capital projects. And these ones, we. Used to be there was just a project name, budget, number that was attached to it and where those actuals are. Uh, with this one, again, we've added that qualitative piece to it to understand, give a, or give a better understanding of to where those projects are at and their, in their, uh, in their progress. And so they they range, most of the quarter one sections are blank because this policy and this, this process wasn't introduced until about quarter two of twenty twenty-five. But you'll see anything that's been updated in for this report would be found in the quarter three uh box and explains where the, where the project is at at this certain point. So if any questions on any of the projects, then happy to look into those ones as well.
And once we have time to go through the budget, I expect there'll be more questions on our regular finances, just because we'll be more. Informed.
I just want to go to the the summary page here. Sorry, just one moment. There we go. So, so the the various tables that that follow the summary page provide an update status on each of the projects, capital projects that are outlined in the summary, just for future reference. And I believe they're also hyperlinked, so might make it a little bit easier for. And I believe they're also hyperlinked, so might make it a little bit easier for, for navigation.
Question. Do these reports stay available for us for a while or do they disappear?
They'll be in the agenda package. So they're.
They'll always be there.
Permanent part of the agenda.
Awesome.
And, and for anyone.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. I think it's impressive, all of it, so.
The next, uh, if there's any questions on projects, the next four. Reports, D attachments, D E F N G are related to the bank reconciliations for our bank accounts. The bank accounts that we hold are the, our, our general account, which is more or less our, our checking account, our, our general operations account. Savings account is where we keep the majority of our funds so that our operating count doesn't have. We, we try to keep a, a lower balance in that one, always aware of the risk of bank fraud and, and keeping those funds in a, in a secure, a more, a, a secure. They're all secure, but we, if, when we send out checks and, and things, those, that information is out there that can be used by those who would. Who would have nefarious means to, to do things, but we keep those in separate accounts. And they, those generate interest on those accounts, which then is recognized as revenue in our, in our budgets. Then we have the public reserve trust account, which is. Related to. When someone does a development and some funds are deposited into the, the public trust fund for, or public reserve trust for. Municipal purposes, green spaces, if needed, schools, and instead of, instead of dedicating a specific portion of the development, they can deposit some funds into that. And then the horsefly bank one is related to funds that are related to the, the horsefly reservoir project, the grant funds. The, the contributions from other municipalities that are stakeholders in that, in that agreement. And, and these are all of the bank reconciliations up to the end of August. Just because at September thirtieth, we didn't have this, or when this report was done, September thirtieth bank reconciliation hadn't been completed, but this is the most up to date version of the. Of bank reconciliations. At time of preparation. And just for what, what to look for, if you're looking at the, the, the general bank account one, it lists. The, the first balance is the list of what are the bank statement from, from our bank says, and it has any of the, the outstanding checks that need to be cashed. Any deposits that are outstanding, and then it gives a, a, a total. And then at the very bottom, the difference, that's, that's where I'm looking to see that it's a zero, the difference that we're saying, yes, our bank system, our, our bank account. Matches what our financial software is saying, the checks, deposits that are, that are outstanding, that they, they then reconcile to each other.
Counselor Chikado.
I'm a little backwards. That's okay. It's on the line of graders. It's showing that we've expended everything except for two hundred and sixty, two thousand five hundred and eleven dollars or thereabouts. That isn't enough to buy another grader, yet it says in progress. So I'm not sure, like what, what, I guess, what does that number mean then? Cause I would assume all the graders have been purchased.
The, the note on court versus all graders have been set up and put into service. I believe that to. Court to answer, if they're already, that could be in, in the next one, be marked as completed. I'm not sure.
Oh, so it's just, it, it has been completed. Okay. That's all I was wondering, cause there's, there's, you know, there's just a little bit of money left there. Thank you.
Okay. The next report attachment H is related to the overtime. Overtime payments to, to staff. This is, is related to only the unscheduled overtime that occurs. And the, the reason that the, the, the green one, water is higher in July is there was a leak at the, the Bow Island plant, and there was some extra time that the staff were putting in there to, to deal with that. But then the rest are. Here and there, needs for fairly low amounts for unanticipated overtime amounts.
Quick question on that. So that was in Bow Island. So we, when it's a regional plant, we all contribute the different municipalities to fix things like that?
The, with the, with the water commissions, the Bow Island plant is, it's run by the. Highway three. Full name of it, highway three regional water services commission. Which is, which makes up, which partners that are M D, the M D of Tabor. County of Forty Mile and Town of Bow Island. And that commission contracts the M D to run the operations. And so the operations that are occurring there, if there's time, it is, it is M D staff that are doing that. Unless they bring in a contractor or some sort of, someone else, but typically it would be. The M D's water operators.
So the commissions pay for M D of Tabor staff.
Yeah.
To provide those services.
And the final three reports, I J and K attachments are related to the counselor expenses for the, the third quarter. At this time, if there's, if there's less than seven, it means we just haven't received the, at that time hadn't received the reports or the, the. Expense reports from those councils at that time, and it shows what has been paid out at that point. If those reports come in at a later date, then those are added to it and they do get. Paid according to, in those months that they were, that they submit those for. But at the time of, of generating the report, these are the ones that were available.
Should be noted that the link on the top takes you to the report. So you could see how those numbers were arrived at. And that will be the same as when we submit ours. So people can see which meetings, what day and why you submitted to come up with that number. So I have a general question on the quarterly report. So it has been in very recent M D of Tabor time that we've gone to a quarterly report. We used to have a monthly financial. I'm wondering if it shouldn't be its own line item in the agenda, rather than in the consent agenda. Cause consent could mean we just go, okay, good. But since we made that move to a quarterly. I wonder if that should have its own spot on the agenda. And because we tend to in the consent agenda, discuss things, but that's not really the. Purpose, right? I don't know if.
The question's for me. I'm just, I would just need to clarify, like to, to what end or what additional.
I think everything of the report is good. I just mean, since we've moved to a quarterly. Should it have its own agenda item? We used to discuss finances every month and we probably didn't spend as much time as we should. The intention behind the quarterly report was it would be more comprehensive. It would give us a snapshot in time for each quarter. So there could be potential more discussion. I just wonder, since it's quarterly, and that's only my opinion. Other counselors may feel different. It's not about the context, it's just the location in the agenda.
I'm, I don't.
You're indifferent? Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Yes, of course.
Just in general, if there's a change, like where we, Counselor Kato found a change that needs to be made for the decimal point. Is it re-put out to us? Or how does that get dealt with? Cause I had one on the letter concern that was blurry. I couldn't read it. And it was blurry, then it got fixed. So it's good. You can read it now, but when I first got it, I couldn't read it. So is it reset and told us there's been changes made or highlighted to the changes that are made? Or how does that, how does that work?
So on the letters of concern, I was at the same problem you did. So then I, in the shared notes in our agenda, which are only available to council and to administration. I let administration know that I couldn't read them. And then in the shared notes, it says that they were fixed.
Yeah, but that's good for us, but the general public never got that, right? So if somebody read it, be like, I can't read that. So I think it should be shared that we made changes and highlighted somehow. So the general public knows something's been changed in there too. Cause it's general public information, that's right. So we changed something, we change it, the general public should be noted, hey, I read this. And now I got changed. What have I got changed? It'd be highlighted, simple. Like that's just an matter, right? It'd be simple, just to highlight and say this got changed and everybody knows. We dealt with it and it was done. I think. But the few people I talked to said, uh, wasn't, and then I went back in there with, it was next, right? But the general public wouldn't have known that it got changed and fixed because they have no way of knowing unless they reread the whole thing. Or if it's just a specific spot they want to see, right? I think it'd be good to note what got changed, if it got changed.
For me, the financial change would be a reflection today in if we're, and, cause we're going to approve the consent agenda. We're not approving the Q three, and that's partly why I'd like to have it, you know, separate, but with the changes, right? So we would, could take it out of the consent agenda, but there have been times, even with shared notes, unless you happen to go back, you may not. Know that there's shared notes. So I don't know if there's a mechanism. I, I totally hear what Counselor Condor is saying.
Yeah, I mean. It's, it's very simple, but become contained, Chris, but that's fine. We're here to work, so. There, there's going to be definitely a lot of, one thing I can guarantee is mistakes. There's going to be a lot of typos. There's going to be a lot of. Blurry, like, like the example you brought up. So it'll be, it'll get a little bit. The medium we use to, to make those corrections, I'm not, absolutely not opposed to correcting those types of minutia, but. We can do it.
It, it isn't.
Come up with a new system.
It isn't meant as a criticism. It's meant just as a, how do we update? How do we make sure?
Just a general knowledge thing. It's not, I make more errors than anybody else, probably. If somebody makes more errors at the computer more than me, I'd like to see them. But it would just be that if there's a change, just to note there was a change. We don't have to redo the whole thing and we don't have to just. Say, oh, there's a, there was a simple change. Read it again if you want.
Just referencing simple, something simple in terms of. Updates were made, period. Like updates were made that, that cues them to look at it again, rather than go into all the potential adjustments. Cause that would be very, very easy.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be easy and simple. Yeah. Now we don't have to go into a whole, have to make it simple, say we changed something.
And I don't know if, just a question internally, is there a way to set a notification if somebody doesn't? Cause there's just so many places to look, you know, like, like our other system, you know, on our phones, it notifies me that somebody in council put something in there. Anyway, I don't know if that's even possible, but it's, it's kind of nice to see what other people are asking, cause it helps me stay up to speed.
Yeah, that would just have to be, I think, a matter of developing the habit to check the shirt notes.
Yeah, that's what I wanted. There, there isn't a being, it's something I just have to check.
There isn't that notification.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe that'll be on the seven of us to develop the system. I added a shared notes. Yeah.
Or just a simple group text we all got.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like just our, our, within our own seven. Okay. Counselor Chikado.
But within the, within the agenda, I guess, as I go back to it lots of times and. What brings my attention to it is it, it's the only thing that's green. When we've changed something or added a shared note, it's green. But then sometimes if I don't go back and look and understand that it's been changed. And so then it's responsible ability of me, once I've entered that shared note, then go back and look. But I, yeah, there's nothing wrong with letting the rest of council know that I added a shared note. And, and maybe that's something we could do as well.
Okay, explain again. Where do I look for the green?
In your agenda package. If you look at, so look at nine point one one, C A O report, there's a shared note in brackets. In green. And you click on that and then you'll see the discussion between whoever entered the shared note and whoever responded to it.
And, and there will be lots of learning for all of us, like. As at our last orientation, our reports and our per diem is a whole new system for all of us. So we're all kind of moving along that learning curve together. Okay. Any other questions on the C A O report? Counsel, Deputy Reeve Johnson.
Yeah, not specifically on the C A O report, but just, I, I appreciate that there has been. Practices in place in the past, and this is the way things have been done. But I'm just wondering if we require this. Level of detail on all of the information that is in the consent agenda. I guess I, I'm wondering if it's necessary for us to have the bank reconciliations on each of the individual accounts. And also the overtime report. I just, I don't see that there's much need for that level of detail. To be included in the agenda package, but I'm open to comments from council and or administration on what the past practice has been, if it's necessary going forward.
Some is evolutionary, but we were. We knew that we're going to this quarterly report. So this is the right time to perhaps make changes or suggestions. To how we move forward, cause it's, this is the first time I've seen it.
We've provided something similar to this though, monthly.
And that may be, but I guess I still question the need for that level of detail to come in. For discussion during a council meeting. I just don't think it's necessary.
And I think when you see us go through those bank recs, no one asks a question because it's not information we're familiar with. So, you know, that's not our day to day, the budget, the percentage that's left. So. I think that's the part that, you know, we, some is carryover from past councils. And the, to speak to the overtime, that's a past council's issue, but it's been addressed in the C A O report in other ways. So. Again, perhaps this to me is like a committee of the whole discussion of what do we expect from. The consent agenda. And that's why I felt, oh, this is new Q three, let's have a discussion. But then I was like, oh, it's in the consent agenda. So this is definitely a little bit of what does this council want and need?
I'm just concerned about Counselor Tori staying up all night and reading the. May not be necessary.
So C A O Crofts, what would you like us to, how would you like us to provide you direction on what we, cause I can see that's why you're looking. You know, what, what would you like from us? Do you want us to pick and choose? Do you want us to, do you hear what we're saying and that your finance department will?
Yeah, I can appreciate, I can appreciate all the comments that were made. What that, the information that's included in the quarterly financial report is there as a result of policy. So if we want to, if we want to change that, we can revisit, definitely, we can revisit that policy and, and make those changes in that context. Generally speaking. I think it's, I mean, there's no better time. If you're looking to make change, there's no better time to consider that at the beginning of a new term with a new council. I think that's a natural expectation. But yeah, we could look at, if, if council wants to. Review. The financial reporting policy to see, to potentially remove certain things or adjust other things. I'm definitely willing to take that direction from council.
So we have a spot in the consent agenda that we can ask to remove something or motions that come out of the consent agenda. That could be the discussion on the quarterly financial reporting. Any other questions or comments on the C A O report before we move to correspondence? Okay, we'll continue on to correspondence. Usually C A O Crofts just runs through these quick to, and then if there's one that we need to pull out, we include that at the request for exemption.
Yep, just a congratulatory. Correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs with respect to the recent elections and your new role as counselor. Sorry, I just gotta scroll down here. Sorry, I just got scrolled down here. Similarly, from Fortis Alberta, correspondence in that regard. Update from Old Man River Regional Services Commission with respect to the transition of their new, their retiring C A O and appointment of new C A O. We do have a council member that sits or that has been appointed to that, to that board. And then three letters of concern, three letters of concern, generally the same topic. Generally of the same topic with respect to grasslands. Couple came through, through his email. A few came through his email and one came through as snail mail. So, or Canada Post Mail, I should call it, sorry.
Okay, so the normal, any questions on any of those correspondence? So normal practice would be a motion to accept the consent agenda and request the exemption. So right now I have that we would discuss the financial quarterly report. All the financial reporting policy. Is there anything else that you would like out of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, then a motion to accept the consent agenda with an exemption of the financial reporting policy. Someone's willing to make that?
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Any questions? Those in favor? I propose we take five minutes and then we'll carry on with the agenda. Okay, we'll resume our meeting and we're moving on to memos, upcoming meetings and events.
This is typically a snapshot of, at the time the the agenda is issued, this is typically a snapshot of what what council or councilors have coming up and what what they've been able to RSVP and whatnot. So it's an opportunity for us to quickly confirm or clarify any sort of attendance, attendance matters or questions that council might have in that regard as well. Couple of things to point out with respect to the R M A events, we have, we have an appointment that was scheduled with K Division. So the the commander of K Division, which is R C M P for Alberta. And I believe that was just mainly because we have a new council and thought it'd be worthwhile to establish and make introductions in that regard. We do not have an appointment with municipal affairs, although it was requested. And we have an appointment with the, the regional director of the South for Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors. And those, I believe, should all be in your calendars already, so. We were able to confirm council folders as well for December first after the council procedures and process meetings orientation.
There's a couple of events, maybe you have them farther down the calendar twenty six that I think we should at least book rooms for, for whoever might be going. And that would be the E D A, which is the Economic Developers of Alberta, which is April fourteenth to the seventeenth at Cannonaskus. That's a very good conference and usually the rooms sell out very quickly. And also F C M twenty twenty six is June fourth to the seventh in Edmonton at the Convention Centre. And since in Alberta, again, maybe, maybe a good idea for anybody who can attend to go because that's a, in the past, it's been a very good conference. With the exception with the last, the last one that was in Alberta.
We do have a policy that says two counselors can go, but that conference travels across Canada. So when it's in our jurisdiction, that doesn't require planes, we have made motions if other people would like to go. So we may, we don't have to do that today, but we maybe should be looking at getting those rooms booked. Because it'll be a busy conference. And then the same night that we have coffee with council is the Vauxhall Winter Fest. So some of us might try and do both, but if we could add that to the list for upcoming on the community side. Okay. Any other questions? This is often the time if you haven't been able to send them to any updates to Arlis or and Lace, that if you wanted to do an addition, even if it was a community event, so they can get added on. So as you get on your committees, you'll know when they have fundraisers or requests for volunteers, then we try to get that all built in. So we're as informed as we can be. And the top part is, I think, as it states, the meetings and events are direct invitations, but then the community events, same thing, just general. And sometimes we get both that they want an invitation to someone to be present and then we just try to work within the seven of our schedules. So we have at least representation. Okay, with that, we would accept the meetings, upcoming meetings and event memo.
I can accept the upcoming meetings and events memo.
Thank you. Any questions? Those in favor? It's carried. Tabor and District Adult Learning Loan Agreement Processing.
So the memo is simply just provision of additional information in response to the the letter delegation. All administration has been simply doing is just implementing, implementing the loan based on the agreement. We did, we did check to as early as this morning, just to check and see if land titles through the, through spin, it's called, just to check and see if, check again to see if land titles has, has has the K V it registered on title? And it looks like it does. So that's something that administration is able to proceed with without any sort of decision from council because there's already a process in place for that. So we can move to to release the funds likely beginning of next week now that the requirements of the loan agreement have been met.
So similar to other loans or funds being available to community groups. I can think of one most recently where I think it was two hundred thousand dollars and we did not want our names on title. I don't remember us asking for, to be named on the loan agreement as far as a, a, being named on the title, I guess, for this one. I don't remember that discussion. In fact, I thought it was the opposite of that. That we didn't want to be named.
I think historically, council has never, never endeavored to protect the funds through a loan agreement. And this is just one, one small mechanism that can be done through it, just through a standard loan agreement. It was a standard loan agreement that was provided by M D Tabor's legal council. If you want to remove that protection, I guess you could give that direction.
I guess, I think council's approach on both the previous one and this one as well, the discussion was there's liability in being named there. And so by removing your name, all you're owed is the money. And when, by by keeping your name there, you might be open up to liability of owning the building, which, which I think I might be speaking quite frankly, but I don't think the M D needs to own anymore.
No, but it would give the option to recover funds. You may not necessarily have to own the building, but recover your funds through a, through a process of, of property disposal, right? If council doesn't want that, the idea of having a loan agreement like that in place, we can, based on your direction, we can, we can remove that. I'm just trying to think of the past example. That's not, it's not clicking with me. Is it Star Theater? Yeah, that was a grant.
Yes. So I, in my time on council, I don't think we've issued a loan agreement. This would be the first one. It, I.
I'm trying to recall any other loans because they typically, typically have been grants like.
Yeah, we, and more so, we've said, we'll give you the grant, but in this unique circumstances, there was a grant given as well as a loan. So the line in the memo was providing clarity to me on page two, the June seventeen, twenty twenty five. And if that, I can live with that if it was, you know, if it's a protection item, I just didn't, I didn't know. And I, I had heard from board members as well, some concerned that they hadn't had access to that money. But I, I didn't have an understanding of, of why or how come, but it is different than anything in my time on council that I've seen.
So the most, the most recent, or some recent grants that I can recall are contribution to Vauxhall Baseball Academy, contribution to the Trail seventy seven. But those have been in the form of contributions, right? Not, not loans.
I'd like to ask, that's more context. The town itself, the town of Tabor, our neighboring municipality here also offered the loan, but with no such conditions. And so we were seen as, what, why are you guys holding out? And that was the question that was asked during a board meeting. You know, what's going on here? Why is this being treated differently? I thought we were following the same rules. As I thought, we mimicked our motion to the town's motion and how those funds were going to be disseminated. And so I guess that's where some of the problem comes is, why did we have stricter rules, I guess, than our neighbor? As far as having to guarantee this loan by being named on the, on the mortgage, other than the property.
Yeah, I guess, from an administrative perspective, it would be to safeguard M D of Tabor tax dollars. I can't speak to the town's process. Maybe they're less concerned with that, but.
So based on the information you gathered today that we are on, have a K V it, will that money be released now?
Yeah, beginning of next week, it should be released.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this memo? So a motion to receive the T D, Tabor and District Community Adult Learning Association loan processing request memo. Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve. Those in favor? Thank you. Yes.
In the future, like I'm just, I don't want to make any many, an assumption though, but based on the conversation, if council isn't, isn't comfortable having things within loan agreements that would kind of provide some elements of protection with respect to the tax dollars. We're open to, to making that a future council agenda item and we can, we can look at how we can meet council's expectations and adjust our loan agreement accordingly. If that would be, if council would be open to that. I just, I just want to make sure that we meet, we're on the same page moving forward and meet council's expectations in that regard. That's all.
How common is this?
How common is this arrangement where we're requested to provide funds on a loan or grant basis? If, if loans are few and far between, I guess I. Think we could probably just provide direction on how we feel there's a need for security or not on an. Individual basis as the requests come in.
I, I would agree with that, maybe having a line when we do receive loan requests to. Ask, we have that be part of the RFD on whether we believe that for this loan, let's say from ABC. Whoever it is, not-for-profit wanting money to build something, that we ask at that time, if it's a loan. Whether we want security on that loan or not.
Establish it on like a case by case.
Yeah, I think that would be the easiest. Just as long as it's a go forward and we understand that that will be coming forward for discussion. And then it will be developed through the, through the motion and the loan agreement.
Okay, that's good clarification for me.
Okay, are we okay to carry on?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify as well.
So our next agenda item. Is dealing with the tax recovery lease assignment request prior to um. Earlier in the meeting, Resolution C twenty twenty five four fifty five. Which was to request a pause on all discussions and. Decisions regarding lease policy sales on all lease lands. This is not the right, because we did not remove. Because the scope, it should include all of them. I think it's different in there. Uh, so that resolution C zero two, zero two five four fifty five. Does have us have a pause on all discussions. So the motion regarding this next item would be to. Propose delay or table. Until we have met the requirements of C zero two, twenty twenty five four fifty five. If people are willing to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, uh, do we have a, a proposed motion? Because I, I don't know if I'm using the word tabled correctly or, or delayed.
I would, I would suggest perhaps postpone.
Postpone, thank you. I just want to make sure I have the right word.
What's the agenda item number though, that we're referring to?
So ten point three on the electronic copy. Am I out of order, Arlis? Yeah. So this is the request. For the lease assignment. Counselor Condor, does that meet your intent? Kate?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion reads, MD of Tabor postpone agenda item ten point three. Of the November twelve twenty twenty five regular council meeting until such time as council determines that motion. C twenty twenty five four fifty five has been satisfied. Any questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Moving on to. A request that was made to discuss the borrowing bylaw on. The irrigation project, I would suggest that we have a similar motion to what we have done. On the prior agenda item, if council is so willing. So we'll just wait for that motion.
So that would be ten point four?
Yes.
I can make that motion.
Counselor Peters moves that the MD of Tabor postpone agenda item ten point four of the November twelve twenty five regular council meeting. Until such time as council determines that motion C twenty twenty five four five five has been satisfied. Any questions? Those in favor? That motion is carried. We are now entering into request for decision non-bi law. Assessment services. Request for proposal, request for purchase, I guess.
Yeah, so the, the RFD that's before council contemplates potential award with respect to. MD of Tabor Assessment Services, as well as potential appointment as, as required through legislation of the MD of Tabor. Assessor. Our current contract expires um, this coming February two thousand twenty six. So Corporate Services had issued an RFP in preparation for that expiry. I'm sorry, a request for proposal to receive potential submissions and I'll let Director Corporate Services summarize that for council's. Benefit.
So yes, we, we issued the RFP. Had it open for about six weeks, closed on October seventeenth, we received one submission. And that is the submission that we're recommending be approved at this point. Benchmark assessment consultants have provided assessment services to the MD for the last, I want to say five years. Um, and so we are well aware of the work they provide and, and, and the quality of it. And this would just be taking that contract and, or issuing a new contract with them, entering a new contract uh, for a seven-year cycle, which would allow them to. Do, over the course of the contract, do their, their more in-depth assessment of each individual division over the course of the contract. Uh, it comes to. Uh, the first year of the contract for twenty twenty six is a hundred ninety-six thousand plus the software licensing, which is related to the, it's a software for assessment to, to move the different. Through the figures in from, from their system and bring to be able to move into our municipal software. And so it's the, for twenty twenty six is a hundred ninety-six thousand plus those licensing fees, which I'm estimating to be approximately fifteen thousand, uh, which are costs that we are. More or less already incurring on our end. At this point, right now, we, we, we hold a license for that software. But in order to streamline the services, they would take on that software, they would receive a greater, uh, 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 a better rate. For that software as they are doing on a bulk. Bulk purchase of it, uh, where we pay a slightly higher rate because we are a single municipality using that license. Um, and so uh, there might be some minor savings in twenty twenty six, but it would be minor savings.
Counselor Chiracado.
Is it typical to go with a seven-year contract? Previously, what was ours five? Do you remember?
It was a five-year contract.
So seven years, I, I think it's outlined in the RFD, it just allows for actual full cycle, so a seven-year cycle of inspections. Our, our municipalities divided up into seven areas. For assessment inspections.
Any other questions on the memo?
I know that the, the MD has gone through some. Changes in the past and how assessment services has been provided. With in-house and then contracted out, and I guess I, I'm just wondering, has consideration been given? To whether this is the most cost-effective way to continue providing that service, or would it be appropriate to take a look at? In-house services once again, I just don't know what level of review and consideration has been given. To the different options that are out there. I just have a bit of a, a concern when there's only one tender submitted. The, the territory seems to be kind of carved up and. The different service providers have an unwritten rule where they won't play in somebody else's sandbox and I just. Think we need to look at that.
So I guess, my time on council, we did start, when I first started on council, we did have in-house services. In, in comparison, there was a significant savings to going to the services we currently have at the time. But we have not, I guess, done an analysis of what it might cost, and that might be something we could talk about. During budget discussions, but that mean we'd have to do that soon, I guess. Because we're going to be tied in here for seven years, so yeah, it's an important conversation for sure, but my understanding is this is significantly cheaper.
Deputy Reeve.
Is there an option in the existing agreement to look at a one-year extension while we have a chance to. Look at how the service is delivered going forward, or is it seven years or, or nothing at all?
Your question is with respect to the current agreement, right?
I'd have to go find, I'd have to go find the agreement and take a look at it.
I want to be very careful how I say these comments. But from a, um, when we were in-house. It had a different feel than an arms-length contractor and the assessment is arms-length. And so there were. At that time, there was an in-depth analysis on the costs and also the pros and cons. And perhaps that can be made available, but for me. This is one of those contracted services I'm very glad to have out, so I would be in favor. I get the review. But I, at this time. I would be in favor of an external assessor.
I, I can provide a, a little bit of. A little bit of response, I just hope that it's not received as gospel because I am pulling from my memory. But when compared to. How the MD of Tabor was delivering it in-house and. And the contracted service option. At its peak, you were looking at four hundred thousand plus. Um, with respect to the in-house service delivery. I would say as it was wind, the in-house service delivery was winding down. Um, it was. A wash. And that ranged from two assessors to four assessors. Just depend on how, again, depending on, comparing it to how the MD of Tabor had previously. Provided the in-house service.
Other questions or comments?
I, I just know from talking to my neighbors, um, as a regular citizen before being elected, this is a contentious thing, obviously. And so, um, being able to just tell my neighbors, look, this isn't. In-house, we don't all get around and start working on this, you know, I, I can see where that part is very helpful.
Seven years does tie us and the next council, so I, I, but I don't know if they would be open to. And I get it's the full cycle. But seven-year contract is a pretty darn good contract, we. In a different. Topic, we felt five years was adequate.
Well, and it, and with just being only one person tendered, yeah, like, maybe in-house isn't, but maybe are there, there's no other services like this? Is it, it's pretty limited, hey?
I think perhaps in the south of Newell County and Cypress County, have in-house services, I believe. So, yeah.
Yes.
Would there be the possibility of going back and even negotiating a three-year contract? And then that way it gives us a chance to take a look at it, figure out if this is best approach for the long term. I, I just, I, I'm hesitant to support a seven-year contract when there was only one tender submitted. Just. Seems to be unusual.
So I've got a question, how do you propose to get more people to submit? RFP or respond to the RFP, let's put it like that?
Valid point. If, if there, if others that are in the business aren't prepared to submit, there's nothing you can do to force. Them to do that. Really, the only other options are you go with what you've got, or you look at the other alternative. And I just, I, I question if we want to make a seven-year commitment. At, at this stage, but if the rest of council is comfortable with going ahead, don't let me persuade you otherwise.
Any other comments? I did hear the question, is there a mechanism that we could either find out about an extension? That was one, and the second one was, could we look at altering the date, but I did, was our RFP. Request for proposal, seven years? Is that what we put out, or was that the returning bid?
It was issued as a seven, uh, seven-year one to accomplish that, that, that cycle.
Just so there was consistency for the full cycle. Okay, I can, yeah, Counselor Condor.
So you said it was put out, so where was it put out?
Alberta Purchasing Connection.
So everybody had access to it.
Okay, so either we can continue with the discussion. Or make a motion to either continue or to delay, but um, it, it does get us in a. Assessment is something we need to have done and we need to have an assessor.
I'll move that to Municipal District of Tabor Award that Assessment Services. RFP to benchmark assessors, consultants. As per their submitted proposal and direct administration to sign the contract with the service provider.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? We can continue the discussion with the motion on the floor.
Well, I'm kind of with Counselor Johnson there, but I don't think we have any other choice at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Seven years is a long time not to have a choice, so when you're tying up the next council, so I don't mind what's discussing you for a bit.
Counselor Torrey.
I think this is part of having a new council, but, so just trying to understand the seven-year cycle and all these things. That's all new to us, because the contract wasn't negotiated based off of something standard, it was on our seven district, or divi. And that's just what they do is one division at a time, kind of?
Yeah.
So, okay.
One, one division at a time plus development improvements, right? So anything new.
So then they won't come back to assess that same division again for seven years, you know, those, everything will just stay.
As a general inspection, no, but if there's new developments or new improvements, then they inspect those.
Right.
Across the entire municipality.
And there is other factors, it's not just the same dollar assessment, so perhaps we could speak to that, and then my question to, besides that, is. If. If it, did they negotiate our contract or was this RRFP and they just put a price to what we put out there?
Right.
So two questions, one, how does assessment values work? And then the second one, did they accept our contract or was it negotiated?
Uh, assessment is, there's, they, they run. Assessment is there's they they run models that taken factors of of sales, of transfers, of new development. Any changes, you know, we provide the development permits and then the value of those that of those of those developments. Then they enter that information into their to their programs, which then they are able to generate. Their models that determine what those what those assessments would look like. And so they they factor in market conditions and and. Adjustments for. Whatever conditions have been in in an area. And then they they can take those and and. When they do a general inspection in a certain area, then they look at what has been they look at every property in that area. For the other ones, they're using those those other conditions that their that their data provides as well, that their algorithms bring forward. So if they do an inspection in Division Three. Division one, two, and all the others are going to see changes as well that are based on on those market conditions. And whatever other information that they are using within their within their models. In addition to any of those those developments that have happened, new developments that have happened. That we provide information based on our permitting departments to to show them with those changes as well.
So require a fine question?
Yeah.
So because our M D is so big and we do have a little hamlet. So if there was something dramatic happening, but you know, with the Lamb Weston or something like that. And so Grassy Lake had an intense pressure and pricing, it would affect. Enchant, even if, I mean, obviously, it's not completely remote, but that is, and that's why you kind of keep moving it around. But it still has, it could, anyway, it's interesting process, yeah.
Just with just with respect to, I believe, and I don't want to, again, make it inappropriate assumption. But the general question in terms of comparing in-house versus contract service. I believe that's centered around cost. Or maybe not, could be type of type of service too. But just, I mean, simple math with three, sorry, not simple math, but general math. As it relates to. A body. And then the bird, like, not in a negative sense, but the employee burden of the body. We're looking at two hundred thousand plus vehicle, plus all the operating costs to go with it, plus professional fees, plus training. We're looking at pretty much kind of as we experienced previously, a wash. So then 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 the analysis would essentially just be, do you prefer contracted services or in-house as a matter of preference? Right? And that's the discussion we could we could ultimately have at some point. From a cost perspective, I don't, based on what we're seeing with the submission. I don't think it would be much different, if at all. And that's just in the context of only having one one assessor, right?
Maybe if it helps move things along, I'll vote in favor of Counsel Reynolds' motion.
So no one is required to declare their vote, but it is good to have an understanding of. I I always feel it is important if you're going to be a yea or nay to speak to to that you've been given opportunity. So if anyone else has a comment or a question on the red in motion, I will read it in before we carry on. But if you have any other comments. All right, so I will read the motion in that the M D of Tabor award the assessment services R F P to benchmark assessment. Whoops. Consultants Inc. as per their submitted proposal and direct administration to sign the contract with the service provider. Any further questions? Those in favor. Motion is carried. These discussions are very important regardless of which way we land. We shouldn't. It's fine to take this time. So as part of our obligation, we also have to. Make a motion for a designated officer to carry out the duty. So there's a motion in front of you. If you would like to make that motion, someone, Counsel Tori.
I move that.
I move that counsel appoint Logan Waylay. To the position of designated officer to carry out the functions, duties and powers of a municipal assessor. Under the Municipal Government Act.
Any comments or questions? Those in favor. That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the lot sales. Agreement time extension request. Now, I do feel this is different than the motion that was made earlier. This is a piece of property that has been already sold and they're looking for a development extension. So I I would encourage council not to see it in the same light as the others.
For me, this is different because it's not a lease.
Yeah.
Property. That was it was named in the motion that it was. M D owned leased lands.
Okay, thank you. I will turn it over to C O Crofts.
Yeah, this is actually specific to a lot that was purchased within the Hamlet of Enchant. Or the, yeah, where there's a a sales agreement in place. And I actually will let our Director of Community Services speak speak to the matter.
Thanks, Arnold. Specific to two industrial lots that are located in the Hamlet of Enchant. Mister Stamp has or Stamp Farms Limited has reached out to the M D to our planning development team in order to request a six-month time extension. The extension would provide him enough enough time to continue his plans, his long-term plans. And it should be noted that the recommendation is from November twelfth, so from today for both for both lots, lots. Lot one and lot three, block fifteen, plan one eight, one zero, five, nine, nine. And again, two industrial lots in the Hamlet of Enchant. These two, these two lots have had a previous extension provided prior to this. One of them, the the extensions were for one year, so this will be an additional six months. And Mister Staff has provided a a letter to the to the M D, and this is specific to the sales agreement. Not to be not to be to be associated with a development permit. There would be a development requirement to go to M P C as far as a development permit extension as well. That is separate from this. This is very specific to the lot sales agreement. So it is a extension of the commence construction time. That's proposed in our lot sales agreement. Our development team is also here, and so if there's any additional questions. Our recommendation does have, we have some alternatives as well for council consideration. If there's a if their desire under the agreement, there is a repurchase option for the municipality. That's been outlined as as separate option. As well as other options if they wanted to be, if we wanted to look at other options as far as separating the lots and dealing with them individually. But certainly, these are the two alternatives that have been identified by administration.
Thank you. Counsel Peters.
I'm just wondering if the administration has any objections. For any reason to the extension. Because it would affect you more than us.
Yeah, no, there's no objections to it. We do provide a recommendation for a six-month time extension, again, to support Stamp Farms Limited. From an administrative perspective, we will just note that these these two lots haven't been developed on. And the intent of the program is to encourage development on our lots. So as we move forward administrations, you know, we we provide lots, we service lots, we want to make sure that they're fulfilled. And our sales agreement is written in a way that supports that. So so certainly, we're just trying to support development. But at the same time, make sure that those deadlines are met.
Okay, any further questions? There is a recommended. Motion if you're inclined. Kate, Counsel Chikado.
I'll give you the motion that the municipal district of Tabor approved Stamp Farms Limited request for a six-month time extension. From November twelfth, twenty twenty-five to commence construction on lot one, block fifteen, plan one eight, one zero, five, nine, nine. And a six-month time extension from November twelfth, twenty twenty-five to commence construction on lot three, block fifteen, plan one eight, one zero, five, nine, nine. In accordance with the existing lot sales agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the red in motion? Yeah, I'll go Counsel Reynolds and Counsel Peters.
I know one time we were talking with Mister Stamp, he was wondering about. Selling them back to us, but. No, he wants a time extension, but. Just wondering off the top of my head if one of these lots would be a good place for a fire hole. If he wanted to sell one back.
It possibly could. I mean, that's something that. There's a couple, a couple wheels in motion here, right? I think he has a a request to purchase another. Property or area within within Enchant. So maybe as part of that discussion, it might be. Might be relevant to to suggest. But as it relates to this particular specific agenda, I don't I don't know how an extension could negatively impact, I guess, that potential.
Counsel Peters.
I'm just wondering, I I didn't look through this, I'll be honest. I'm just wondering if they're they're residential or industrial lots.
They're they're both industrial lots.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any further questions on the motion? So the motion reads M D of Tabor approved Stamp Farms' request for six months' time extension from November twelfth, twenty-five. To commence construction on lot one, block fifteen, plan one eight, one zero, five, nine, nine. And a same extension to commence construction on lot three, block fifteen, plan one eight, one zero, five, nine, nine. In accordance with the existing lot sales agreement. Those in favor. That motion is passed. Okay, the moving into bylaw, we are, those are timed. Public hearings, so we'll move to eleven. I don't know if the number is electronic. We will go to thirteen point three, bylaw number two, zero, two, seven, twenty twenty-six, annual borrowing bylaw. Mine shows thirteen point three, so.
Can I move first reading?
You you so can. So Counselor Deputy Reeve Johnson moves first reading of. Bylaw number two, zero, two, seven, the twenty twenty-six annual borrowing bylaw. For those new to council, do you have any questions or comments on this or an understanding of what we have just moved? It will require three readings. They are not requested to be done today. Anyone want a? Quick administrative explanation? Go ahead. Thank you.
Each year we have to pass a a annual borrowing bylaw or we pass one to maintain a corporate credit card. And this allows for those those funds to be borrowed. This bylaw expires on December thirty-first of each year, and then a new a new bylaw is. Of course, if council passes it, is then passed to allow that borrowing and allows to get that credit card for the following calendar year. So this is one that would be coming up every year in order to do so. The borrowing parameters around this one do not reach the threshold of requiring advertisement as in other borrowing bylaws. But this one is a a lower threshold amount and then for a shorter period of time. And it just requires those. To occur, to pass that passing of the readings to allow for those uses of those funds in that way. We only have first reading here, but if more readings are. Desired to give to take it off another meeting further along, then that's fine by me as well. But only first reading is listed here, but alternatives would be to include more readings.
Motion has been made. Any further questions? So first reading given to bylaw number two, zero, two, seven, the twenty twenty-six annual borrowing bylaw. Those in favor. That motion is carried.
Can I suggest we go ahead and just give it all three readings today so that it doesn't have to come back on a future agenda?
You can.
I I would agree with that. This is something that actually. Was never really done before anyway, but this is for, it's not very, it's significant, but it isn't that significant. So I would I would concur with that, and I'll give you second reading.
Thank you. Those in favor of the red in bylaw for second reading. That motion is carried. If we're going to continue, we require a motion to proceed with third reading, and it has to be unanimous. So the motion is to move to third reading.
I can do that. I move we do the third reading for the borrowing by law.
To move to the third reading. Kate, thank you for the motion on the floor. Counsel Condor.
Just to clarify how this all works. And so to go to one, two, and three, does everybody have to be present to go to third if you do all three in one? Or is it just got to be a majority? And then just has to be majority on that one, right?
To to do the move to the third, this motion is has to be unanimous of everyone who is present.
Has to be unanimous.
Yeah, to move to third reading. And there would be some bylaws. I wouldn't be comfortable doing this. This is quite unique and minor, and it doesn't set up, it, we would reevaluate each one individually.
So it just has to be unanimous, everybody here to move to all three now.
That's right.
Just want a clarification.
So the motion is to move to third reading. Those in favor. That is unanimous, so we could continue. Someone make a motion to move third reading of bylaw number two, zero, two, seven, twenty twenty-six annual borrowing by law.
I can move to do a third reading.
Counsel Reynolds, any questions? Those in favor. The borrowing bylaw for twenty twenty-six is passed. Kate, consent agenda items. We have one. On the quarterly financial report. I know that's a little bit of me wanting it outside of consent agenda and a bit of Deputy Reeve Johnson. To help us evaluate what should be in that report or what needs to be present. So yes, Counsel Chikado, go ahead.
I'm wondering if this isn't a topic for another committee of the whole meeting. At a at a future date.
Yeah, so you could make that motion.
I just did.
Thank you. Counsel Chikado moves that the quarterly financial report and policy be discussed at an upcoming committee of the whole. Any questions? Those in favor. That's carried. Next is. Council requests for information and motions. It's kind of just, and so. We have one that was shared with all of council from Counsel Chikado.
So I would like to propose a motion. That the M D of Tabor purchased up to twenty tickets for the twenty twenty-six Tabor's table, which is a long table dinner event. Which will be hosted August. I had it written down here, August fifteenth, so Saturday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, will be hosted again. With the events, I guess, invitations would be provided to selected government of Alberta ministries and M L As. For attendance by themselves or people within their departments. Would also suggest, I would also suggest that these attendees arrive early on that day of the on the idea of the event. To participate in a tour of food processing facilities and primary food producing farms.
Okay, thank you. And could you tell us your rationale for that motion?
I guess the rationale would be that, you know, Edmonton doesn't seem like it's that far away until you bring somebody from Edmonton here. And they don't have a real good understanding as to what happens here and how much food production and and the stuff that goes on here. I think it's important for them to understand that so that when it comes time for grant funding or other issues that we might have. You have people in your corner that understand what happens here.
Counsel Tori. Counselor Tori?
I was just surprised this summer to find out that, that celery was growing here. Like, there's just so many things that are happening here that, that I don't even think we locally realize. It's, it's pretty amazing how intensive it's become.
I would agree. I've, I've said this since I got on council is that I don't even know what's being grown by, in, in my own municipality. So how could I expect Edmonton to understand? So I think it's important to highlight, to highlight this to, to everyone, including ourselves.
CEO Crofts, do we have a space in the budget that this can come from?
We do if there's a resolution suggesting it, directing it.
Yeah, I move that we purchase twenty tickets to be disseminated amongst the MLAs and, uh, government departments for the twenty twenty six Tabor's table.
Let me help you with that. Counselor Chikado moves.
Sorry, we do have, we did.
Okay, thank heavens, because.
I was just wondering, just so the new council, do you have an idea what the, the cost will be? Like, if it's ten thousand dollars, it's a no, but if it's
Yeah.
Just, just a new council that knows what the price of them are.
It'll be in around a hundred dollars. That's what they were previously. Last year they were cheaper. I think they're going back up to near a hundred dollars. I don't think it'll be in excess of that. The price hasn't been decided yet, but I don't believe they'll be over a hundred.
And I think then that, uh, we budget the tour as well. Right?
That's right.
Not, like, I, I, I feel this is a two-part motion. So could you review that? And Lace, that anybody's being encouraged to arrive. Uh, how about that, that the MD of Tabor provide a tour early in the, a guided tour earlier in the day of our invited guests or something, just so that as much as we want to encourage them to arrive early, we provide a tour.
Yes.
That being a friendly amendment, Ms.?
Yes.
Well, he hadn't approved his motion yet.
Oh, I approved it.
Not yet, you haven't. I will, I'll, I'll read it once, once he says yes.
Looks good to me.
She's not even turned. Counselor Condor?
Can I just add, we put a cap on it, so if there are a hundred bucks, inflation's gonna go up whatever, so we don't exceed, right now that'd be, if it was a hundred bucks, it'd be two thousand, so we don't exceed twenty-five hundred.
For the tickets and the tour?
No, just the ticket part. The tour is gonna be, tour is gonna be harder.
Right, yeah, I, I think that's a very, are you good with that addition? You haven't approved the motion yet.
I have approved the motion and I accept the amendment.
Uh, yeah, a friendly amendment. Okay, so from reading, um, up to twenty-five hundred dollars, to a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars. Okay, I'll read it in. The MD of Tabor purchased up to twenty tickets to the twenty twenty six Tabor's long table event on August fifteenth, twenty-sixth, that invitations be extended to select government of Alberta ministries and MLAs for attendance by themselves or representatives from their departments to a maximum twenty-five hundred dollars. Further, that the MD of Tabor provide a guided tour to the invited attendees prior to the dinner event. Any questions or comments? Those in favor? That motion is carried. At this time, is there any other counselors who would like to do a council request for information or motions? So my only, do you want it here to set dates for these committee of the whole? Dates that where we, we set? Yeah.
Yeah, one thought I had, and I, I know it may not work with schedules, but we did have a November twenty-fourth committee of the whole scheduled, I believe, for one, one P M. It might provide for a little more time if we could push that into the morning, nine, nine A M., but I recognize that there was a scheduling conflict at that point in time. So if that's an option, that would be great. Um, if not, we can come up with some alternatives.
Which day was that?
November twenty-fourth.
I thought we had someone who wasn't available.
I, I am not available. I'm, I'm in Edmonton at a convention for that.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Thursday night.
Okay.
So we can look at other dates.
And I can't make it to one, either.
Yeah.
Don't change it just because of me, but I'd love to be there.
This is a, it would be really nice if we can get people there.
And it's the same as R M A, only I'm on a gas clubs.
Right, yeah. Okay.
What, the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth?
Uh, they just said he's not back till.
I'm, I'm back evening of the twenty-seventh, so twenty-eighth would work. I might have to use toothpicks to keep my eyes open.
We have orient, we've already scheduled an, uh, a M P C orientation that day. Afternoon, it's one o'clock till something, so, um.
December second?
Yeah, what is, what are people's December second? Like, that's a Tuesday. I'm seeing nods, so we could schedule December second. Do we have a marathon day?
And then there's one scheduled for December ninth as well.
Okay, so you feel, like, I'm just wondering where is budget happening?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's on the schedule for No- November twenty-fourth and as needed on December ninth, but we need to have budget, interim budget at the December sixteen council meeting.
Yeah, we don't have another date. So do people ha- have availability the third or the tenth, and I don't even know if staff does, to have it as a tentatively scheduled, because we're gonna run out of time, like, a budget. Well, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, second, third, fourth. I was gonna run up to Vauxhall for their snowflake festival for a little bit before we've always had someone go for a bit before. Right, okay. So would that work for you, Deputy Reeve? Okay, yeah, so we have December second. Do we want to try to set a third tentative date or a third date and then cancel it? I just, we have all of this and budget plus whatever else is on committee of the whole that we haven't seen. Do you want to pick another date? Second, four, or third, fourth, tenth, or eleven? Kate? And, and if you don't want to schedule it, it's okay, but I just worry we're gonna run out of time. Kate, yep. Well, we're gonna avoid that because we have someone who can't be available. These are so important to have as many people. And did we hear about the tenth? I know you don't like to see us back to back, but if people are available. Eight, or the eighth? Kate? Or do we go the second and just go as long as we've gotta go? It's just, it's a lot. Like, I'm fine with, you know, take a half hour break, come back, take a half hour break, come back if we need to. And just try to be a bit of a marathon, but what about for your staff, Arlis?
I think the priority at this point is meeting councils' schedule.
What about on the twenty-fourth? Could you, we're starting at one, can people go a bit later that day? That's a Monday. Just, I, for me, I like to know approximate end times, so if I've got other meetings or oh, right, Ernie's not here. That's right, sorry, Ernie, yeah. We're gonna keep with that date, but not on those matters. Yeah, okay. Well, that's why I'd like to schedule it, and if we cancel it, that'd be great, but if not, so what does? Tenth? Okay, so let's schedule it, and if we cancel it, then we do, but let's schedule it, please.
So the two, the two dates, or which dates are they?
The second and the tenth.
Of December?
Yes.
I would request that be set through resolution.
Yes, I, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure we were good. So we would require a motion to schedule committee of the whole meetings for December second and tenth within nine A M. Kate, thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Questions? Those, oh, yeah, go ahead. Hundred percent.
They have to put in to be able to talk in that, or?
We don't have, we don't have a spot for delegations that.
But if we want to talk, we can request it earlier.
So what, the practice that we did, so the practice, and we don't have a a procedure, is that if we had a question of them, we asked, but it gets really risky if you start engaging in debate and, and back and forth. But the practice has been, if we had a question of someone who was in attendance, is we don't have a delegation for committee of the whole, we, that's only a council. Well, we have had people come.
To provide a presentation.
Yeah.
We can ask them, the first two groups who want to come and talk on a subject, we could tell them to be present on that.
Well, maybe we have to make the motion tighter to, like, I, if we, I don't, I have no issue.
The tool that we have now is, is the delegation opportunity for, for council meetings.
Okay.
That's definitely established.
Yeah, I don't want, I, I don't want to stifle. I just worry that how do we get through budget and understanding leases? But I, I think I know where, where you're going, some options.
We could schedule them to come as early as the November council meeting.
Right. Would they want to do that? Okay.
The December council meeting? Sixteen, that's only a week later. Do a special council meeting for them.
Yeah, because it's better to have it recorded. Anytime people, I always feel we lose so much by not having it recorded. Okay, so right now, the motion on the table is to schedule a committee of the whole for December second and tenth if necessary. Well, you can bring it up even next. Okay. All right. Okay, all right. Those in favor of the scheduling? That motion's carried. Okay, and any other council requests for information and motions? Deputy Reeve?
We've had brief discussion on it, but I'm wondering if we need to have further conversation about whether we're open to recording and live streaming the committee of the whole discussion. If we're, if we're going to do that, the sooner we make that decision and line everything up, the better.
So current practice is council meetings are recorded and live. People could watch them in real time on YouTube, and then they can go back and watch them. That is our only meeting. We have had a practice of recording public consultations, so people can go back and watch those. Counselor Condor?
I'd like just to go through one to see what it's about before we start making decisions on what the committee of the whole, if they've ever been part of that part, so I'm not against recording it. I just like to do one to see what it's about before we, I make a decision, because I don't know what, what it's all entail.
Yeah, that's a, a fair statement. My comment will be the most criticism I have ever received as a counselor is that we make all these decisions behind closed doors, but we actually make them at committee of the whole, which is public, but there's no way to, I sometimes catch myself defending what we did there. So, um, I, I intend to have thoughts with Deputy Reeve that it would solve council's problems because we've not made closed-door decisions. But I, I under, I hear what you're saying, so we can wait and, oh, Count, CEO Crofts?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a really important topic, especially from a transparency perspective. If, I mean, if council would like, I could, I could make it a matter of a, a request for decision or agenda item at the next council meeting and and they could make a decision based on that. That, by then, you will have already had one committee of the whole meeting under your belt. And I can do a quick, just more, maybe not a request for decision, because it's ultimately council's decision, but maybe just a memo outlining some common practice from our neighboring municipalities, because some of them do that. Um, just basic background information that, that might set us up good to be able to do that moving forward.
Okay, a, and a, a cost, right? There would be a staffing cost and a server cost and all those things.
I think, I think just, yeah, resources or allocation. I mean, technology's technology will transparency, there's just a cost of transparency. It's difficult to put a cost on transparency.
Okay.
It's important for the municipality.
So Deputy Reeve, just so it's in the, would you like to make a motion to direct administration to provide a memo on potential recording of committee of the whole?
Sure, or Counselor Condor, do you want to?
Sure, I can make that motion next council meeting. We will have one under the belt then.
And it doesn't mean we have to, it's just information. Is that adequate, Counselor Condor? Kate?
That's fine with me.
Thank you. Counselor Condor moves that the MD of Tabor direct administration to provide a memo regarding recording of committee of the whole meetings at the next council meeting. Any further discussion? Those in favor? It's carried. Okay, it is twelve fifteen. I believe the only items remaining are scheduled items that happen after lunch. So I would propose a recess for lunch until one o'clock.
Okay, we will resume. Okay, we will resume. Okay, we will resume. Okay, we will resume. We're actually entering into a public hearing procedure for the MD of Tabor. We're actually entering into a public hearing procedure for the MD of Tabor. We're actually entering into a public hearing procedure for the MD of Tabor. We're actually entering into a public hearing procedure for the MD of Tabor. There is scheduled public hearing. 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 So at this time, I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves. So at this time, I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves. So at this time, I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves. So at this time, I'm going to ask everyone to introduce themselves. Those who are present either to support or oppose the bylaw. Those who are present either to support or oppose the bylaw. Those who are present either to support or oppose the bylaw. Those who are present either to support or oppose the bylaw. And before we do that, we'll introduce the members of council. And before we do that, we'll introduce the members of council. And before we do that, we'll introduce the members of council. And before we do that, we'll introduce the members of council. So just quickly do that. 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 Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Marie Reynolds, Division Six, counselor in Gen area. Marie Reynolds, Division Six, counselor in Gen area. Marie Reynolds, Division Six, counselor in Gen area. Marie Reynolds, Division Six, counselor in Gen area.
Lane Johnson, the Division One area, west of Tabor through to Gen. Lane Johnson, the Division One area, west of Tabor through to Gen. Lane Johnson, the Division One area, west of Tabor through to Gen. Lane Johnson, the Division One area, west of Tabor through to Gen.
John Tricado, Division Two, counselor, which is south of Tabor. John Tricado, Division Two, counselor, which is south of Tabor. John Tricado, Division Two, counselor, which is south of Tabor. John Tricado, Division Two, counselor, which is south of Tabor.
Tamara Mianega, Division Four, which is Tabor, north to the Old Man River. Tamara Mianega, Division Four, which is Tabor, north to the Old Man River. Tamara Mianega, Division Four, which is Tabor, north to the Old Man River. Tamara Mianega, Division Four, which is Tabor, north to the Old Man River.
Martin Conner, Division Seven, Vauxhall. Martin Conner, Division Seven, Vauxhall. Martin Conner, Division Seven, Vauxhall. Martin Conner, Division Seven, Vauxhall.
David Torrey, Division Three, Grassy Lake area. David Torrey, Division Three, Grassy Lake area. David Torrey, Division Three, Grassy Lake area. David Torrey, Division Three, Grassy Lake area.
Ernie Peters, Division Five, Hayes. Ernie Peters, Division Five, Hayes. Ernie Peters, Division Five, Hayes. Ernie Peters, Division Five, Hayes.
Okay, and then we'll go to the.
Okay, and then we'll go to the. Okay, and then we'll go to the. Okay, and then we'll go to the.
So at this time, we would like to have those who are present, whether online or in person, So at this time, we would like to have those who are present, whether online or in person, So at this time, we would like to have those who are present, whether online or in person, So at this time, we would like to have those who are present, whether online or in person, supporting or opposing the bylaw to introduce themselves. 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 All right. All right. All right. Right?
Just for some clarification, too, we have the applicants here. Just for some clarification, too, we have the applicants here. Just for some clarification, too, we have the applicants here. Just for some clarification, too, we have the applicants here.
Okay, so they don't have to. Okay, so they don't have to. Okay, so they don't have to. Okay, so they don't have to.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Okay, and then online? Okay, and then online? Okay, and then online? Okay, and then online?
Currently, no one, no one is online. Currently, no one, no one is online. Currently, no one, no one is online. Currently, no one, no one is online.
Okay. 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 All right. All right. All right. All right. So at this time, we'd asked the planner to read the purpose of the bylaw and outline details of the bylaw. So at this time, we'd asked the planner to read the purpose of the bylaw and outline details of the bylaw. So at this time, we'd asked the planner to read the purpose of the bylaw and outline details of the bylaw. So at this time, we'd asked the planner to read the purpose of the bylaw and outline details of the bylaw.
Okay, so the public hearing is for the purposes of bylaw, proposed bylaw number 2023. Okay, so the public hearing Okay, so the public hearing Okay, so the public hearing is for the purposes of bylaw, proposed bylaw number 2023. is for the purposes of bylaw, proposed bylaw number 2023. is for the purposes of bylaw, proposed bylaw number 2023. This is an amendment to the area structure plan for King Arthur's Lakefront Resort, This is an amendment to the area structure plan for King Arthur's Lakefront Resort, This is an amendment to the area structure plan for King Arthur's Lakefront Resort, This is an amendment to the area structure plan for King Arthur's Lakefront Resort, amending the original adoption bylaw of bylaw number 1829. amending the original adoption bylaw of bylaw number 1829. amending the original adoption bylaw of bylaw number 1829. amending the original adoption bylaw of bylaw number 1829. And it's located on a portion of Lot Three, Block Two, And it's located on a portion of Lot Three, Block Two, And it's located on a portion of Lot Three, Block Two, And it's located on a portion of Lot Three, Block Two, Plan 2010659, in the east half of 301216, west of the fourth. Plan 2010659, in the east half of 301216, west of the fourth. Plan 2010659, in the east half of 301216, west of the fourth. Plan 2010659, in the east half of 301216, west of the fourth. The applicant is proposing a fifth 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 phase to the King Arthur's Lakefront Resort. 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 This is located adjacent to Marshes River on the east side. This is located adjacent to Marshes River on the east side. This is located adjacent to Marshes River on the east side. This is located adjacent to Marshes River on the east side. The campground has already completed four phases, and this would be the fifth. The campground has already completed four phases, and this would be the fifth. The campground has already completed four phases, and this would be the fifth. The campground has already completed four phases, and this would be the fifth. And the proposal is to add an additional 39 fully serviced seasonal sites. And the proposal is to add an additional 39 fully serviced seasonal sites. And the proposal is to add an additional 39 fully serviced seasonal sites. And the proposal is to add an additional 39 fully serviced seasonal sites. It will establish the framework, so the design standards and requirements for this phase of King Arthur's Lakefront. It will establish the framework, so the design standards and requirements for this phase of King Arthur's Lakefront. It will establish the framework, so the design standards and requirements for this phase of King Arthur's Lakefront. It will establish the framework, so the design standards and requirements for this phase of King Arthur's Lakefront. This would bring the total units to 281 of the camp sites. This would bring the total units to 281 of the camp sites. This would bring the total units to 281 of the camp sites. This would bring the total units to 281 of the camp sites. The subject property is located approximately nine kilometers southwest of the town of Vauxhall. The subject property is located approximately nine kilometers southwest of the town of Vauxhall. The subject property is located approximately nine kilometers southwest of the town of Vauxhall. The subject property is located approximately nine kilometers southwest of the town of Vauxhall. And the proposed development would be accessed from Marine Road 165. And the proposed development would be accessed from Marine Road 165. And the proposed development would be accessed from Marine Road 165. And the proposed development would be accessed from Marine Road 165. Also access is from Township Road 125, 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 which are both maintained by the MD of Tabor. which are both maintained by the MD of Tabor. which are both maintained by the MD of Tabor. which are both maintained by the MD of Tabor. Access to the lots within Phase Five are from an existing main entrance in King Arthur's Lakefront Resort. Access to the lots within Phase Five are from an existing main entrance in King Arthur's Lakefront Resort. Access to the lots within Phase Five are from an existing main entrance in King Arthur's Lakefront Resort. Access to the lots within Phase Five are from an existing main entrance in King Arthur's Lakefront Resort. And then the internal campground 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 roadways would be extended, obviously, to address access internally. roadways would be extended, obviously, to address access internally. roadways would be extended, obviously, to address access internally. roadways would be extended, obviously, to address access internally. Subject property is currently zoned rural agricultural for this portion that's being considered. Subject property is currently zoned rural agricultural for this portion that's being considered. Subject property is currently zoned rural agricultural for this portion that's being considered. Subject property is currently zoned rural agricultural for this portion that's being considered. There is also a proposed amendment to 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 change that designation to the private 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 recreation, which would be required to actually allow for the development of the proposed recreation, which would be required to actually allow for the development of the proposed recreation, which would be required to actually allow for the development of the proposed recreation, which would be required to actually allow for the development of the proposed Phase Five. Phase Five. Phase Five. Phase Five. We did circulate all of the 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 proposed amendments to Alberta Health Services, ATCO, Fortis, Bow River Irrigation District, and the Bow River Gas Co-op. proposed amendments to Alberta Health Services, ATCO, Fortis, Bow River Irrigation District, and the Bow River Gas Co-op. proposed amendments to Alberta Health Services, ATCO, Fortis, Bow River Irrigation District, and the Bow River Gas Co-op. proposed amendments to Alberta Health Services, ATCO, Fortis, Bow River Irrigation District, and the Bow River Gas Co-op. We are in receipt from comments from Alberta Health Services, which are in your attachment C, and also ATCO from in attachment D. We are in receipt from comments from Alberta Health Services, which are in your attachment C, and also ATCO from in attachment D. We are in receipt from comments from Alberta Health Services, which are in your attachment C, and also ATCO from in attachment D. We are in receipt from comments from Alberta Health Services, which are in your attachment C, and also ATCO from in attachment D. There weren't any issues or concerns that were identified in those review agency comments. There weren't any issues or concerns that were identified in those review agency comments. There weren't any issues or concerns that were identified in those review agency comments. There weren't any issues or concerns that were identified in those review agency comments. Alberta Health did reference provincial regulations, 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 which the applicant is well aware of because this is Phase Five. which the applicant is well aware of because this is Phase Five. which the applicant is well aware of because this is Phase Five. which the applicant is well aware of because this is Phase Five. They also did have a preliminary review from Alberta Health Services, They also did have a preliminary review from Alberta Health Services, They also did have a preliminary review from Alberta Health Services, They also did have a preliminary review from Alberta Health Services, and that didn't find or didn't produce any issues or concerns. and that didn't find or didn't produce any issues or concerns. and that didn't find or didn't produce any issues or concerns. and that didn't find or didn't produce any issues or concerns. Landowners within 0.5 miles of the subject property were notified by mail of the public hearing. Landowners within 0.5 miles of the subject property were notified by mail of the public hearing. Landowners within 0.5 miles of the subject property were notified by mail of the public hearing. Landowners within 0.5 miles of the subject property were notified by mail of the public hearing. And as of November 4th, were not in receipt of any written comments from property owners. And as of November 4th, were not in receipt of any written comments from property owners. And as of November 4th, were not in receipt of any written comments from property owners. And as of November 4th, were not in receipt of any written comments from property owners. And then the public hearing was also advertised 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 in the Vauxhall advance on October 30th and November 6th in compliance with the MD of Tabor's notification requirements. in the Vauxhall advance on October 30th and November 6th in compliance with the MD of Tabor's notification requirements. in the Vauxhall advance on October 30th and November 6th in compliance with the MD of Tabor's notification requirements. in the Vauxhall advance on October 30th and November 6th in compliance with the MD of Tabor's notification requirements. I do want to introduce a proposed amendment. 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 There was a discrepancy in some of the acreages that were reported in the area structure plan. There was a discrepancy in some of the acreages that were reported in the area structure plan. There was a discrepancy in some of the acreages that were reported in the area structure plan. There was a discrepancy in some of the acreages that were reported in the area structure plan. So drawing one So drawing one So drawing one So drawing one in the attached area structure plan is proposed to be amended in the attached area structure plan is proposed to be amended in the attached area structure plan is proposed to be amended in the attached area structure plan is proposed to be amended to state 3.79 hectares instead of 3.85 hectares. 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 And then in the introduction on paragraph two, in the last sentence, And then in the introduction on paragraph two, in the last sentence, And then in the introduction on paragraph two, in the last sentence, And then in the introduction on paragraph two, in the last sentence, incorrectly referencing 7.75 acres, the total area affected is 9.36 acres. incorrectly referencing 7.75 acres, the total area affected is 9.36 acres. incorrectly referencing 7.75 acres, the total area affected is 9.36 acres. incorrectly referencing 7.75 acres, the total area affected is 9.36 acres. The discrepancy arose through a variety of earlier versions. The discrepancy arose through a variety of earlier versions. The discrepancy arose through a variety of earlier versions. The discrepancy arose through a variety of earlier versions. And unfortunately, it just wasn't caught before it got to council. And unfortunately, it just wasn't caught before it got to council. And unfortunately, it just wasn't caught before it got to council. And unfortunately, it just wasn't caught before it got to council. The public notice is correct in terms of the acreage that was reported. The public notice is correct in terms of the acreage that was reported. The public notice is correct in terms of the acreage that was reported. The public notice is correct in terms of the acreage that was reported. So there aren't any issues or concerns with that. So there aren't any issues or concerns with that. So there aren't any issues or concerns with that. So there aren't any issues or concerns with that. Drawing two of the area structure plan shows the details that are being proposed. Drawing two of the area structure plan shows the details that are being proposed. Drawing two of the area structure plan shows the details that are being proposed. Drawing two of the area structure plan shows the details that are being proposed. So you can see the camp sites, 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 the proposed internal access road. 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 There is also a pond that's being proposed, and that pond would be lined. There is also a pond that's being proposed, and that pond would be lined. There is also a pond that's being proposed, and that pond would be lined. There is also a pond that's being proposed, and that pond would be lined. And then there's also internal lighting, power building, and And then there's also internal lighting, power building, and And then there's also internal lighting, power building, and And then there's also internal lighting, power building, and potable water, including all of the underground systems and lines, potable water, including all of the underground systems and lines, potable water, including all of the underground systems and lines, potable water, including all of the underground systems and lines, as well as a new septic field. 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 And so all of the necessary analysis was completed to demonstrate feasibility of that proposed development. And so all of the necessary analysis was completed to demonstrate feasibility of that proposed development. And so all of the necessary analysis was completed to demonstrate feasibility of that proposed development. The applicants are here to provide any more detail that council may want with respect to this. The applicants are here to provide any more detail that council may want with respect to this. The applicants are here to provide any more detail that council may want with respect to this. But based on the preliminary information available through the review process and But based on the preliminary information available through the review process and But based on the preliminary information available through the review process and the comments received from planning, we don't see any issues or concerns specific to the proposed Phase Five. the comments received from planning, we don't see any issues or concerns specific to the proposed Phase Five. the comments received from planning, we don't see any issues or concerns specific to the proposed Phase Five.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for comments from those in support of the bylaw. At this time, I'd ask for comments from those in support of the bylaw. At this time, I'd ask for comments from those in support of the bylaw. So since there are no comments in support, I do not need to ask for those So since there are no comments in support, I do not need to ask for those So since there are no comments in support, I do not need to ask for those who want to rebuttal comments made in support. who want to rebuttal comments made in support. who want to rebuttal comments made in support. And now And now And now is there comments for opposing the bylaw? is there comments for opposing the bylaw? is there comments for opposing the bylaw? Hearing none, we don't need to have a rebuttal. Hearing none, we don't need to have a rebuttal. Hearing none, we don't need to have a rebuttal. At this time, council, you have the opportunity to ask questions of the At this time, council, you have the opportunity to ask questions of the At this time, council, you have the opportunity to ask questions of the administration, the planning team. administration, the planning team. administration, the planning team. And we didn't have anyone spoke in favor opposed, so you can't ask them. And we didn't have anyone spoke in favor opposed, so you can't ask them. And we didn't have anyone spoke in favor opposed, so you can't ask them. So you're limited to CEO Croft or planner Bonnie Bruner. So you're limited to CEO Croft or planner Bonnie Bruner. So you're limited to CEO Croft or planner Bonnie Bruner. Counselor Tricado. Counselor Tricado. Counselor Tricado.
I have just one question, is this the final phase of the area structure plan? I have just one question, is this the final phase of the area structure plan? I have just one question, is this the final phase of the area structure plan? Or is there, or is it added to every time they add a phase? Or is there, or is it added to every time they add a phase? Or is there, or is it added to every time they add a phase? I was curious. I was curious. I was curious.
Yeah, so the way it's proposed, it's an amendment to the existing plan, so it keeps adding the phases. Yeah, so the way it's proposed, it's an amendment to the existing plan, so it keeps adding the phases. Yeah, so the way it's proposed, it's an amendment to the existing plan, so it keeps adding the phases. There is a phasing plan in your application There is a phasing plan in your application There is a phasing plan in your application in the area structure plan, which I believe is drawing number eight. in the area structure plan, which I believe is drawing number eight. in the area structure plan, which I believe is drawing number eight. And so it shows all the phases up to Phase Four, and this would be Phase Five. And so it shows all the phases up to Phase Four, and this would be Phase Five. And so it shows all the phases up to Phase Four, and this would be Phase Five. The applicants possibly can describe to you whether or not they envision any additional phases, but The applicants possibly can describe to you whether or not they envision any additional phases, but The applicants possibly can describe to you whether or not they envision any additional phases, but there is irrigated area, and so there is irrigated area, and so there is irrigated area, and so it's probably unlikely at this point that they're extending into that area. it's probably unlikely at this point that they're extending into that area. it's probably unlikely at this point that they're extending into that area. But they can, they may be able to answer that question for you. But they can, they may be able to answer that question for you. But they can, they may be able to answer that question for you. So what occurs is with this amendment, it's amending that original ASP, and this gets added to that So what occurs is with this amendment, it's amending that original ASP, and this gets added to that So what occurs is with this amendment, it's amending that original ASP, and this gets added to that and forms part of the phasing plan. and forms part of the phasing plan. and forms part of the phasing plan. All the other phases have been built out All the other phases have been built out All the other phases have been built out and have separate development permit approvals associated with them. and have separate development permit approvals associated with them. and have separate development permit approvals associated with them. So what will occur next, should council choose to adopt the ASP and then the rezoning, So what will occur next, should council choose to adopt the ASP and then the rezoning, So what will occur next, should council choose to adopt the ASP and then the rezoning, then the applicant will proceed with making their development permit application for this phase. then the applicant will proceed with making their development permit application for this phase. then the applicant will proceed with making their development permit application for this phase.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Any further questions from council? Any further questions from council? So if all questions have been answered satisfactori- satisfactorily, So if all questions have been answered satisfactori- satisfactorily, So if all questions have been answered satisfactori- satisfactorily, I would indicate, and you have no other questions or comments? I would indicate, and you have no other questions or comments? I would indicate, and you have no other questions or comments? Do we need, this one doesn't require a planner final comments, though, right? Do we need, this one doesn't require a planner final comments, though, right? Do we need, this one doesn't require a planner final comments, though, right? In my list here. In my list here. In my list here.
I don't have any final comments. I don't have any final comments. I don't have any final comments. It's at your discretion whether you feel you have sufficient information to close the hearing. It's at your discretion whether you feel you have sufficient information to close the hearing. It's at your discretion whether you feel you have sufficient information to close the hearing. Or if there's any additional information you want from the applicants. Or if there's any additional information you want from the applicants. Or if there's any additional information you want from the applicants.
So not seeing any questions or comments? So not seeing any questions or comments? So not seeing any questions or comments? Do you have any requests for information? Do you have any requests for information? Do you have any requests for information? Or do you feel you have adequate information to close the hearing? Or do you feel you have adequate information to close the hearing? Or do you feel you have adequate information to close the hearing? Okay, so now I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing Okay, so now I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing Okay, so now I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and to close it, to close the public hearing. and to close it, to close the public hearing. and to close it, to close the public hearing.
I can motion that we close the public hearing. I can motion that we close the public hearing. I can motion that we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll be closing the public hearing on bylaw number 2023, So we'll be closing the public hearing on bylaw number 2023, So we'll be closing the public hearing on bylaw number 2023, area structure plan amendment. area structure plan amendment. area structure plan amendment. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Those in favor? Those in favor? Those in favor? Motion is carried. Motion is carried. Motion is carried. Do we need to wait the three minutes to go into the next one? Do we need to wait the three minutes to go into the next one? Do we need to wait the three minutes to go into the next one? Is that your preferred? Is that your preferred? Is that your preferred?
Yeah, I think that'd be. Yeah, I think that'd be. Yeah, I think that'd be.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Because it's advertised. Because it's advertised. Because it's advertised.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. So council will just pause for three minutes, and then we'll go into the next one. So council will just pause for three minutes, and then we'll go into the next one. So council will just pause for three minutes, and then we'll go into the next one. So council will just pause for three minutes and then we'll go into the next one. All right. We will now move into the public hearing for bylaw number two zero two four. The bylaw number two zero one one land use bylaw amendment. We have in the past, uh, public hearing, we introduced our council. So at this time, is there anyone present who would like to support or oppose the bylaw? Hearing none, then I would ask the planner to read the purpose of the bylaw and outline the details.
All right, so proposed bylaw number twenty twenty four is a proposed redesignation of a portion of lot three, block two, plan two zero one zero six five nine in the east half of thirty twelve sixteen west of the fourth. Affecting nine point three, nine point three six acres or three point seven nine hectares, more or less. And this is to change the designation from rural agricultural to private commercial recreation in support of uh King Arthur's Lakefront area structure plan to accommodate phase five of the campground. The um proposed amendment, as I mentioned previously, is in support of that phase five of the area structure plan for the public hearing, which we just previously held. The rezon was also circulated to the same review agencies mentioned. Alberta Health, ATCO Fortis, Bow River Irrigation and the Bow River Gas Co-op. Alberta Health Services and ATCO sent in a combined response based on the rezon and the area structure plan amendment, identifying no issues or concerns associated with that. Alberta Health Services did reference several provincial regulations, which the landowner is aware of and are applicable should um phase five proceed with development. Landowners within point five miles of the property were notified by mail in the public hearing for bylaw twenty twenty four. And as of November fourth, twenty twenty five, we have no written comments from property owners. The notice of the public hearing was advertised in the Vauxhall advances well on October thirtieth and November sixth in accordance with the M D of Tabor notification requirements.
Thank you. So at this time, comments for those in support of the bylaw. No need for rebuttal. Comments for those opposing the bylaw. No need for rebuttal. At this time, council, you may ask questions to the planner. Okay, this, seeing that there are no questions. Planning, do you have any final comments?
Provided council has sufficient information, we'd recommend you could close the hearing and consider whether or not to proceed with second and third reading.
So council determining that questions that you didn't ask were answered and that you feel you have satisfactory knowledge. Are you prepared to close the public hearing? Okay, so with that, Counselor Reynolds.
I can give a motion to close the public hearing.
Any questions, those in favor? It's closed, so we just have to take a moment while um the administration changes the streaming and then we'll go right into the bylaws. Okay, we're moving on to bylaw number two zero two three, bylaw number eighteen twenty nine, area structure plan amendment. So through our list to the planner or do you want to speak to it?
We can have the planning team just again, if if councils either open to a re-summit or if they're, if they're ready to consider the, the topic at hand, that's fine as well.
Yeah, so council, either way.
Still fairly fresh in my mind.
And and so just so council is aware, because we're a new council, first reading was done. So that then the public hearing was scheduled and now has been held and closed. So now we're ready for the next part.
The municipal district of Tabor gives second reading to bylaw number two zero two three amendment to King Arthur's Lakefront Resort bylaw number eighteen twenty nine effective upon third reading of the bylaw.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Reeve Meanag, uh, we did present an amendment. Um, so with a, with amendment, yeah.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Tercado, are you good with that?
Yes, as amended, I'll add that.
Thank you. Questions, those in favor? That's carried, so we can proceed with third reading. And at this time, we don't have to say as amended, correct? Okay, so you can just read in the motion. Go ahead, Counselor Reynolds.
I can move that to municipal district of Tabor, give second. Oh, no, give us third and final reading to bylaw twenty twenty three to King Arthur's Lakefront Resort bylaw number eighteen twenty nine effective upon third reading of the bylaw.
Thank you. Questions or comments, those in favor? That is carried. Our next item is bylaw number two zero two four, bylaw number two zero one one land use amendment. Just concluded the public hearing on this item. Would you like a recap or are you ready to make the motion? Go ahead.
I'm ready to make the motion that the municipal district of Tabor gives second reading to bylaw twenty twenty four amendment to the land use bylaw number twenty eleven effective upon third reading of the bylaw.
Okay, any questions or comments, those in favor? That's carried. And the final motion?
I can do that. Uh, motion that the municipal district of Tabor give third and final reading to bylaw number twenty twenty four amendment amendment to land use bylaw number two zero one one effective upon third reading of the bylaw.
Thank you, questions or comments, those in favor? That's carried. Thank you to, oh, go ahead.
Just one final comment. Congratulations, I think this is project has been a real nice success story. Wish you well.
Yeah, thank you to the planning team and to the applicant for working so hard together, because it's been a real economic driver for our municipality. Okay. It is one twenty three. We have our uh next delegation here. Are we ready to just roll right into that or do you, we don't need to wait on this one? Okay, so we have our next delegation is here and it is in closed session, so I will read in the preamble. Closed session pursuant to section one nine seven sub two of the M G A and section twenty of the access for information disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, A B O Energy Joyce. So someone make a motion to go into closed.
Motion going to close?
Oops. Counselor Reynolds. Those in favor?
I can motion that we come out of closed.
Give you a motion to accept the ABO presentation as presented.
We have had opportunity for request for council information or motions. Does anyone have any... This will be last call for that for this meeting. Sounds good. Lace, have we covered everything? Right. Then a final motion to adjourn. You are the... Thank you, Ernie.